Welcome. Oh, you're fine. Welcome. City of Lamarck, City Council Workshop Agenda of September 12th, 2022. Notice is hereby given that City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct the workshop on September 12th, 2022, beginning at 4:00 PM in Council chambers at 11:09 B by your role Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to the section 551 dot 127B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer in the form of the Lamarck City Council intend to be, will physically be present at 11:09 B by your role Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel 16 and via YouTube. Council meet for the purpose of, purpose of considering the following agenda. Meeting has been called to order. Here, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember District A, present. Councilmember District B?
Present.
Councilmember District C is not with us for the workshop. Uh, Councilmember District D?
Present. And I am at 4101 Main Street, Lamarck, Texas, 77568.
Thank you. And Mayor?
Present. Let's stand for our application and our pledge. Most holy God, we honor you with our thanks and praise this afternoon, and we, uh, God asked that you would bless us in this workshop, that you would open our eyes, that we might understand, Lord, the next course of action for your people. Well, we know that you are a God that supplies fresh, clean water. Lord, provide that for your people. Give us the wisdom that we might do that. All we ask it all in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to their republic, for what they make one nation, united, in the kingdom of God.
I have a presentation from Waterworth, Calvin Coles, Customer Success Manager. Mr. Coles, available?
Yes, present. Thanks.
Welcome, Mr. Coles.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, if I may, we have a brief introduction leading into what, uh, our, our partners at Waterworth are gonna share. I'll ask Rick to approach, and I see Suzie's also available. Uh, we wanted to paint the picture so everybody understood what got us to this rate and what things are going on. The discussion today is to discuss our water rates, our condition of our water rates and how they relate to others. Uh, this is prompted from the previous discussion that we've had both at our annual retreat and also through the budget process. Next slide, please. So what happened? Where were we the last time that our water rates were raised? It was 2011. Uh, $1 then is equivalent to $1.32 today. Meaning the buying power of a dollar now versus then is only 74 cents. We have seen an increase in over thirty-two, almost thirty-two percent. Inflation rate, although is an average two point, 2.54, we all know that between now and then, we've seen almost thirty-two percent with the latest hike being over eight percent. Um, next slide, please. Where that, uh, points is too, is that $1 today only buys little less than seventy-six percent of what it could buy back then. Um, important is that, is that, um, the actual buying power next year, if, if you know this holds equivalent, today's dollar will be worth a dollar and nine cents next year. CPI back in 2011 was 2.24, while today it's, uh, rushing progressively towards, uh, 300. Your bread used to cost a dollar forty a loaf. Today it's costing a dollar seventy-two. Your, uh, egg prices have gone up by sixty-three percent. Your chicken, your electricity, I mean, we can go on and on at this as to what the reasons are that has caused this to occur. Next slide, please. At the end of it, everything else has progressed accordingly, and yesterday's dollar on an average water bill that would have been fifty dollars and today's dollars would have been sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. I include the introduction. I'll turn it over to Rick, who's gonna talk to you about where our rate is today and how it is calculated. Next slide, Rick.
Afternoon, City Council. This, this is a, the rate study you may have seen earlier this year Gulf Coast analysis, uh, provided us with rates. These are, these are rates, 2022 rates, 2021 slash 22 rates for adjoining cities. You can see where Lamarck sits in there at 458 and the adjoining, um, costs for the various cities. Um, next slide. The, uh, these are our residential rates, and you can see we have an increasing block rate. Most cities are running that anymore, so the more water you actually buy, the rate actually goes higher. It's also considered a conservation rate. Some people refer to as that. We also have different rates for commercial, um, businesses versus residential. So you can see those, those differences in costs. These costs are, these, these rates are posted on our website. There are current costs. The base rate for both the, uh, residential and commercial includes first thousand gallons of water. But that varies by city sometimes. Some people do 2,000 or 3,000. Ours is 1,000 gallons of water with that base rate. And then the incremental increases are based on, on usage after that. Next slide. So when we're trying to set rates, we need to be able to establish a, a, a bookmark. And that gallons that we're using for the purpose of discussion and that was used by Gulf Coast on that rate analysis, how they came up with that $4.58 is, is just math. So it's based on an average of 5,000 gallons residential usage here in, here in Lamarck. There's a base rate of 853. That's a thousand gallons and incremental usage rate for the next thousand gallons is 347, and then the next 3,000 gallons are 363 each. So add those numbers up, you come to a monthly bill of 2289. Divide that by five, that by five, by 5,000 gallons, and that's how you come up with that $4.58 rate. So that is just a, a, a picture of a typical residential user here in Lamarck, which uses between 5,000 and 6,000 gallons. And those rates are the same in that, in that usage range. That 363 is the most popular residential, um, usage rate that, that we have. So most people are buying water at that 363, but because of the incremental rate of 347 in the, in the, in the base rate, their, their water per thousand is actually just under that, 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 well, it's higher. It's the 458 because of the, the base rate, which is a meter fee. Um, the, uh, the rate analysis that Gulf Coast gave us, let me remind you here, does not include the upcoming rate increase from Gulf Coast, uh, for the usage fee, which is 23%. And that'll, that'll go into effect October 1. So that's kind of a picture where we're at right now with our rates. And so that 458 is gonna be used as, as a, as like I say, a benchmark, um, a bookmark benchmark for what, what we're gonna be using as rate comparisons as far as increasing um, our rates in that 458 number. Any questions?
So we're gonna pause our presentation here and now turn it over to our folks from, uh, Waterworth, if it's possible, and we'll come back to our presentation, but I wanna be very keenly sure that everybody understands where the dollar mark of $4.58 comes from. Because this scenario, the only thing that's missing on where says total monthly bill at 2029, if you took the 2029 divided by the five, five for the 5,000 gallons, that's where the rate of 458 comes from. So I wanna make sure, first thing that we do, first step that we all take is that we're all talking the same language, understanding where the 458 comes from. I think that's of vital importance to us, um, moving this thing forward.
I, I do have a question, just for clarity purposes. Under this particular slide or PowerPoint, the, the cost per thousand gallons, the 458, that's the water authority's cost. That's our cost from the water authority.
No, that's our, that's, that's our cost to customers here in Lamarck. So go back, if you go back a, a slide, please. These are our rates, our rates to our customers in Lamarck.
Okay, this is what's on our website.
Rate, then that's why I guess I, I'm confused. The cost per thousand gallons here says $4.58. However, what, 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 whatever council, council number, whatever, whenever they set these rates, the base rate for the initial 1,000 gallons is $8.53.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's our, that's our, that's our base rate. So a base rate is typically made up two things. If you don't buy any water at all, you go to Florida, you're still gonna pay a minimum of $8.53 for your, for your water. Because we, we have water to your, to your tap, to your house. There's a meter there. We have customer service. We gotta send you a bill. And the minimum bill you're gonna get on a water bill, even if you don't use any water, is $8.53.
Okay, that, that's even if the water is turned off.
Even if it's turned off.
Even if it's turned off.
I mean, well, I take that back. If you stop service, you wouldn't get the 853. If you call and say, I want you, I wanna discontinue my water service, then you wouldn't be charged anything. But if you're out of town and you don't use any water, you're still gonna get a bill for 853. You know, if you're hooked up and you're, you, you have an active account for water, same way with sewer, it's a different number, but you're gonna have a, what we, what we refer to as a base rate. As, as just a service charge for us to have water to your house.
So Rick, so that we're clear with our community, that $8.53 a month, even if you never used any, any of the water, would be for the maintenance of the infrastructure that's used to deliver that water to your, your tap.
Yes.
Right, I just wanna be clear. So we're paying $8
Right.
for the main water line, the meters, the other feeder water lines, maintenance of the system, everything that you would need, we, we would need to do to make sure that water can be delivered to your tap.
Right, we still have water flowing, yes.
That's why, that's why, that's why that $8 come, $8.
And, and I was, I was reiterating that it also pays for the overhead because there's accounting. We, we have to send you a bill. Right. So, so we have to generate that, so there's still some accounting cost in, in, in us just running, running the operation.
So, so if you know, and, and Mayor, maybe you know, somebody, what was the, what's the logic then if the cost is $4.53 per thousand gallon? And then, so I understand definitely that, that, that is your accurate, that $8 pays for our
Yes, sir.
a challenged infrastructure on the, in old town Lamarck, but it pays for that.
Yes.
And, um, as well as impact fees on the new part, right? Impact fees contribute to the maintenance of, of, on that side. But what's the logic then? If you know, if, if the cost is $4.58 per 1,000 gallons, why didn't we logically say from the thousand to 2,000, that's, that's an increase of $4.58? The next thousand is $4.58.
Well, no, what we were showing here is if you go back to that Gulf Coast analysis, they, they had in that study that Lamarck was $8.58. So the question is, how'd they come up with that number? Well, the 458, along with all those numbers that you're looking at for all those cities, are all based on one factor, 5,000 gallons of water. So if you buy 5,000 gallons in Bayview, it's 654 per thousand. If you buy 5,000 gallons of water, if you, if you buy 5,000 gallons of water in Galveston, it's $4 and, $5.44. So all these rates are based on 5,000 gallons. Cause you have to base it on a, a number in order to extrapolate out and do a comparison. Because everybody uses different amounts of water. So, so the $22 figure that we have for a customer that uses 5,000 gallons of water is an assumption, right?
So the 458 is, is in fact an average amount based upon a minimum of consumption of 5,000 gallons.
It is a flat dollar amount at 858 is based on somebody buying 5,000 gallons of water in Lamarck.
But what is, is that, does that then necessarily give us the true cost of 1,000 gallons of water then?
You mean our cost?
Yeah, uh, well, yeah, our cost.
Well, our cost is much lower than that because we're buying water.
No, no, I, I, I understand. We, we're a whole, we buy it wholesale, basically. I understand that.
Right.
But if, if, if you're assuming an average cost of $4.58 for fourth, based upon 5,000 gallons, well, I can't, I guess in my, in my little mind, mind you, I'm not, you know, uh, claiming to be some great business person or anything else, but I just, it just seems to me that, that I wouldn't be making the assumption of 5,000. I would be coming up with a, a true cost for 1,000 gallons of water then.
So if you only bought, if you
I, I, actually, correct, correction. Strike the true cross. I would come up with our retail costs for 1,000 gallons of water.
It's $8 and 53 cents.
Okay, that, that, that's, then that's the answer.
For 1,000 gallons of water.
1,000 gallons is $8. It's had the original.
Yes, sir.
That original fee.
It's eight, eight, yeah, $8. That includes, that's a service fee and 1,000 gallons of water.
Because most of us don't use 5,000 gallons of water.
Certainly. The average usage in Lamarck is 5,500.
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir.
Average.
The average, the average residential user is using between 5,000 to 6,000 gallons.
Can you go to the next slide? I, 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 I wanna take a moment and just explain this too, so everybody understands is this is obviously related to how you will be usage and, and what your usage is, right? So percentage that we're looking at the different scenarios to get to the end goal will be to that point. I want you to also know dating back to our budget workshop, the reason that we're here is we've clearly seen through every single synopsis that we've looked at, that our current rate of charging versus what our expenses are are not going to match up well in the bottom line. We're gonna keep going into a deficit. And that's what brought us here. So even if we were to stay at the pace of what the 23% increase is gonna be that we are gonna be facing in the next few weeks here, it's still above and beyond what we need to do to get to catch up to where we need to be. In addition to additional infrastructure that the community has clearly asked us for. They, they've asked us to look into these things, uh, deeply, and, uh, this is what we're looking at.
And, and, and if I can interject.
Absolutely, please.
That's what the, the next part of this workshop is, is the water rate study that takes into account our expenses. What is it costing us to buy water? What's it costing us to deliver water? And what's it costing us to maintain the infrastructure? And, and so when you add all that up, there's a cost per thousand to us, to the city to supply water to somebody's tap. We're selling it for 458 per thousand on an average residential home. Which we're basing that number, we got something to tie back to at that 458 for 5,000 gallons. Somebody buys 9,000 gallons, that rate's gonna be higher because of those increasing block rates. They actually move into that 429 per thousand category. So their cost per water per thousand is going to be higher than the resident that's only buying 5,500 gallons. Because they're gonna, they're gonna move themselves into a higher block rate. Is that clear, or do I need to?
The, 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 the main purpose of this is for folks to be educated where these numbers come from, how they're calculated, and how folks' water bills are, are, are actually put together. So everybody understood how, how that works. But we'd like to move to the next part of the presentation is to invite our friends from, um, from, from Waterworth to join us. You can unshare the screens, you can have, and give them access to what they need. Um, Calvin JP, I'm not sure which one are you gonna lead, but, uh, I, I know we ran through the different scenarios several different ways. We would like to give you the floor.
Yeah, thanks for having us. Um, and JP, I've got you sharing your screen there. JP on our end is gonna take you all through this.
Any chance we could increase the size of it? We're looking at it through, through Zoom. If you could, thank you so much.
Is that better, Caesar?
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, and thanks. Uh, thanks for turning it over to me, Caesar, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting us today to, to present to you and to take you through this workshop. So, um, I'm gonna show you a, a, a number of different financial models. We've put together, I think, six different scenarios.
JP, I'm so sorry. That was very rude of me. I apologize. Could you please introduce yourself as to who you are and what your organization does?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I, I should have thought of that too. My name's JP Jolly, and, um, Waterworth, uh, is, so we've been around for about six years. I've been a rate consultant for about, going on pretty close to 20 years now. And at some point along the way, it became clear to me and, and to the consulting business that there was a better way of doing this. Uh, so we founded Waterworth, so essentially we've taken a lot of what used to be rate study type modeling that used to be done in Microsoft Excel and writing big reports and that sort of industry and turned it into more of a collaborative process, uh, which is what you're gonna experience today. So there's a model that is cloud-based. Um, all of your data or, or much of your data is in this model. And we have the ability to keep this model up to date and to be able to, um, have more engaging and more efficient conversations around what decisions you folks need to make around your rates. And so, um, I hope you have a great experience of that today. Um, we pride ourselves on that. We wanna, at the end of the day, we wanna save you guys a bunch of, uh, time and aggravation that can come into the process of, of figuring out what your rates need to be. Okay, so with that said, um, so I'm gonna show you some models, some scenarios. And, um, as, as you can imagine, there, there's probably an infinite different number of ways that this can be done. And so the, the goal here is to show you five or six ways and, and they're, um, they're organized. We, the first one I'm gonna show you is called the one day, the, the one-year plan. Okay, so it's, it's an idea of how you can solve your rate issue in one fell swoop with one year, kind of like a tearing the Band-Aid off, uh, solution. And then we've got another one-year plan, a slightly different variation on that. Then we've got a three-year plan, a five-year plan, and a six-year plan. So I'm gonna show you these six scenarios. Uh, each one of them allows you to, uh, update your rates in a progressively longer, uh, period of time. And the, the way this is done, I mean, the, the key, some of the key things to keep in mind here is that you have what's called revenue requirements. And so, you know, um, Rick has been talking about the, what it costs to run your business. Uh, some of it, a, a good portion of it is the buying of the water that you do, the regional water. So that's, that's a, a pretty significant variable cost. Everything else is pretty much a fixed cost for you. Um, maybe there's a little bit of, um, some chemicals or some electricity and stuff, but for the most part, you can think of the other half of the business as really being a fixed cost. And so I'm gonna show you that first. I'm gonna show you what it costs to run the business. You can see on the screen here, we, we do things in a very long timeframe because, uh, uh, you know, businesses like utilities have a lot of expensive assets, much of which are out of sight, out of mind. Uh, so it's important for you to have that really long view. Um, how are you gonna make a decision about rates, whether you're gonna, you know, wanna have a, a, a five-year plan or just think about what, maybe you're just gonna wanna make a decision about rates for next year? Maybe you're gonna wanna make a decision to lock rates in for five years. That's a separate issue. But I'm, I'm still gonna show you a long-term view of, of all of this. So I'm just showing you the revenue requirements. And I'm gonna show you something called the cash position. So that's, as it says, it's how much cash you have in the bank for the particular utility. Right now, we're just talking about water. We'll talk separately about wastewater, uh, a little bit later on. So I'm gonna show you a cash position, and one of the big questions is like, how much cash do you guys really need or wanna have around in, in the utility and the fund? So every business has a bunch of cash in its cash register. You start the day with money. You don't start the day with $0. So, so that's part of the question. And the setting of rates is really the process of, um, it, of figuring out what your revenues need to be coming in from the bills, from all the rate payers paying their water bills, what those revenues need to be to balance that cash position, to make it uh, flow along in time into the future at the place that you really want it. And you're gonna see all of that in a moment, and, and hopefully this makes for, um, some eye-opening and, and some, some, uh, efficient kind of understanding of, of all this. So what you're seeing on the screen right now is a blue layer, and it represents your operating expenses. And so it's not important really what the numbers are. Uh, that's 1.6 million dollars in 2022. So these are the operating expenses, uh, separate from, we've got a separate layer here, layer here, which is your purchased water. So if I was just to look at the purchased water, I think we've got this layer inflating at 5% per year. So you can see it's got quite a curve on that, uh, on that layer, and that's, um, just one of the assumptions in the model at this point. So operating expenses in the lighter blue at the bottom, purchased water in the little bit darker blue. In addition to these two layers, you've also got some current debt that you're servicing. So right now, you've got, uh, in this year, you're paying debt down. This is, this is principal and interest payments of about a million, and that goes down, and then you'll be paying that off about 570,000 for, you know, a decade or so. And then some of that debt's gonna retire, and you're gonna be down to being not in debt at all by 2045. Based on what you currently have on the books as debt that's owed. You'll see in the model that we're bringing in some new debt. So in order to get you through the coming years, uh, in, in some of the preliminary discussions I've had with Caesar and Suzie and Rick, um, I, I think part of the, uh, the underlying principle here is we wanna get off of borrowing as soon as possible and move into an era where you're no longer using bank money to do stuff. It's all gonna be done with cash. Uh, but you'll see in this model that we're bringing on some, some new debt. And I'll just turn that layer on. You can see there it is. So this is the new principal and interest payments. Uh, so this lighter blue here, over and above what you're currently obligated to pay off. So, uh, so again, this bottom one is what you're currently, um, obligated to pay off. And this other layer here is what would be the new debt if you decide to go this route and borrow this money that you'll see in the model, um, which looks like this. Okay, so we're look, we're, we're looking to borrowing seven and a half million next year and another eight million and another six million and another four million. So over the course of
JP, I'm so sorry. If I could just interrupt you for a point of clarification.
Yeah, you bet.
These numbers to borrow have come derived from the capital improvement projects that are slated that have been discussed throughout the capital improvement process. We're still working on that. A large part of finalizing the capital improvement plan will have to do is, well, how are we gonna pay for it, obviously? So that's where this, this, the steep, sharp, um, influx occurs in the short term. Um, the, the public has spoken, and they have said that there's a chance for, that there's a need to address our water concern as soon as possible. It has been very clear through these public meetings that that's the main concern. And we're hoping to, to address a large part of those concerns through these CIPs in this manner. So I want everybody to understand why the all of a sudden quick jump, that's because in this scenario that we're looking at is the most aggressive scenario to take care of those projects as quickly as possible. Which means we would significantly address our water, uh, uh, infrastructure issues hopefully by 2027, at least the first fell swoop, if you will. That's, I wanna make sure we all understand what is happening here. JP, sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right. I appreciate you adding that in. So this green layer now is, is, is that what, uh, Caesar's talking about? So this is the capital spending. Okay, over the next several years, uh, we've got, I think we've got five years worth of very specific projects that are, uh, that are identified in the model. And then beyond, you know, year 2027 or so, we, we have a placeholder budget that starts at 5 million, and that budget goes up with some amount of inflation. And so if, the, the, the CIP doesn't currently identify specific projects at that timeframe, uh, but it's believed that the spending will have to continue because there's plenty to do, and that's a little bit yet more to come. But in the meantime, uh, we've got the five years worth of projects in there now. And you can see that these borrowing amounts are kind of lined up, uh, with the spending. So the green is the spending. The pink bars here are the borrowing of the funds. And of course, with the borrowing of money, there needs to be the paying back of that borrowed money. And then, so that's this layer down here that I was, uh, showing you a moment ago, which is, um, over and above the current debt that you're currently, uh, paying down. Okay, so let's, let's stack all those up in one picture here, so you can see all of what we would call your revenue requirements. Okay, so all of these layers add up together, and you can see that, you know, if I sort of eyeball this, I can see it's around 12 million, and it grows to about 14 eventually, and you're at about 16 million in about 20 years. That's based on the assumptions in the model. Things like inflation and so on. Uh, that's what it's gonna cost to run the water utility, uh, into the future. Now, I mentioned that there's a cash position, so I'll bring it up here. That's this black line. And you see it kind of squiggles its way around, and that's partly because, uh, in the utility business, you know, you have big projects and smaller ones, and you know, you, you don't have a, the, the spending on the capital layer particularly, uh, is, can be somewhat erratic because they're just, they're big projects and they don't, uh, they don't necessarily come out Uh, they don't necessarily come out. Smoothly and and you'll see that in reality in the future, it's not gonna be just some nice smooth line. It's gonna have its peaks and valleys as well. Whereas on the other hand, you know, your purchased water is a pretty smooth layer and so is your operating expenses. Those are pretty well known. They go up with some inflation. Uh, but there's not big peaks and valleys and those kinds of costs. It's really your capital. Uh, your capital projects that have these peaks and valleys. And one of the things you're doing with your rates is trying to insulate the rate payers from those peaks and valleys. They they don't wanna see their rates go wildly up and wildly down kind of in. In line with the spending. So you're trying to come up with as smooth um a trajectory for your rates. As you can, uh, while using cash and using borrowing and using those mechanisms to absorb. Um, the the peaks and valleys in the spending. And the end result of all that is what you see is the black line. So the black line. Is your cash. So uh, so at the start of the twenty twenty two fiscal year. Which would have been October first of last year. Uh, the water fund had something in the order of three point nine million dollars uh in in the fund. And when you see this black line go down, it's just simply that you're spending more money in that year than you're bringing in. So you've had to use some, in this case for twenty twenty three, have to use some cash. And in the next years, you'll be bringing in more than you're spending, which is why the line goes up. And then again, it starts coming down over here because there's more spending than money coming in. And so this is just. What you're seeing here is the cash position. Is serving the purpose of absorbing those peaks and valleys. Um, so that the rate payers aren't having to feel those wild swings. And at the end of the day, the question is, where do you want your cash to be? And we've drawn this black dotted line on the screen here. We call that the cash position target. And it is something that is set by way of setting some policies, so some reserve policies. Uh, and those policies are things like working capital, uh, rate stabilization reserves, emergency capital reserves. So there's a number of these kinds of reserves that you would. Um, you know, that are that are, you know, best management practice. For for utilities to have these these reserve policies. And with the ones that we programmed in now. They um, they end up drawing this black dotted line on the screen. So the black dotted line is telling you, you've not perhaps seen these policies, so you may. Not necessarily agree with them and that's a whole other conversation. But for the purpose of today, uh, assuming that those policies are set correctly. Um, you're gonna see how the tool is, you know, the goal is to try to make this black solid line track along the dotted line as best as possible. If your cash position is much higher than the dotted line, it means you've got too much cash in the bank. Why? Why do you have so much cash? You should be giving some some of that money back to rate payers. Or if the line is too low. Uh, much lower than the black dotted line, then you've got too little cash in the bank and that's could be leaving leaving you in a more vulnerable position. Uh, you know, um, leaving Suzie to lose, be losing sleep at night, you know, that kind of stuff. So. Uh, so finding the right balance of where you want that target to be is 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 part of the process. But for today, let's just assume that it's, this is the target. And so what we're trying to get it gonna get you to see here are six different scenarios of how we're gonna steer. This black solid line. Along the dotted line with six different rate scenarios. The first one, the first two are what we call a one year plan. And the next one is a three year plan and there's a five year and then a six year plan. And what I mean by that is if you're gonna achieve this result, remember the spending is is fixed, right? Like you, you know that these are your costs. You can't really get away from these things at this point. Um, based on these scenarios. Okay, so these are the costs. So now we need to bring the money in to pay for all that. And um, so we're gonna see six different ways of doing it. Uh, the first two ways are like to tear the Band-Aid off. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna increase rates in one year, one fell swoop to achieve the revenues you need to to manage this into the future. And the last scenario is a six year plan. It's gonna show you how you can increase rates more gently over six years. Uh, while also steering the cash position along the dotted line like this. Um. So let's get into it. All right, maybe I'll just pause one moment before I get into those scenarios uh in case there's. Some questions about what I've said so far.
No JP, if if I may, I just want everybody to understand, we're presenting. Very separate ends of the spectrum so we can understand where an actual medium would be. So JP, start with scenario one, the ripping of the Band-Aid.
Okay, so. Uh, so the first one. Okay, so this is a, this is a a one year plan where rates go up and I hold on to your chairs here. I don't want you guys falling off. A hundred and eighty percent increase to rates. Okay, so that looks like this. So right now your revenues coming in from rates right now are two point five million. That's in twenty twenty two. Okay, so that's the uh Suzie's not quite done the twenty twenty two year yet, but she figures that by the end of the year, you know, we got one more month to go uh by October first. The rate payers will have paid two point five million dollars towards the water utility. That's this small gold bar right here. This one is a hundred and eighty percent increase to rates to bring revenues. To where they need to be. So that. You can pay all the bills in the future and and keep steering your cash. The way the way you see it here to try to line up with that dotted line as best you can. And you can see one of the results of this is you accumulate, you're gonna end up with thirteen million dollars in the bank by twenty twenty seven with this particular scenario. Okay, there's no way of getting around this. It's just you got a a huge increase right up front and it's gonna generate um a bunch of extra cash. That's gonna accumulate, but that that cash will get used up. So it's not like you're generating some profit to. To do something else with here. That money's all gonna go towards. Necessary projects. It's just gonna sit around in in the utilities fund for, you know, a bunch of years before it gets used up. But you can see here that despite the big ju- jump up, the hundred and eighty percent increase, there's a pretty steady uh increase. You know, again, we're trying to insulate rate pairs from swings, from big swings. You can see that there's a steady increase. That's pretty smooth and steady for them. And you can see it's it's after the hundred and eighty percent increase. We're just doing one point five percent per year after that, kind of a thing of keeping up with with inflation. So we've assumed some inflation. Right on the purchase water and on the operating expenses, we've assumed some inflation. So we're just therefore assuming that rates have to keep. You know, keep up with that inflation because things cost more, then you're gonna have to get more from your rate pairs. Okay. And then. I've had to do a few things out in the future here to reduce rates a little bit, just to try to square up and balance my cash position. Don't worry so much about that. Uh, but the key point in this scenario is the hundred and eighty percent increase to rates. Let's go to the next one. This is also a one year plan.
Um, JP, if if you, so for for those of us following along here. A hundred and eighty percent equates to what being that rate? That four fifty eight would go to what?
Yeah, let's go look at that. So uh, we go to twelve eighty two.
Now we know that's a drastic jump, everybody, but we're just putting things into relation to where we are. Okay, please go to scenario two.
All right. Okay, let's go to scenario two here. So we've got our cash position. This one is. Uh, a hundred and forty percent increase, so a little little lighter than than the first one. Um, but it it in exchange for less of a of a Band-Aid tear off. In year one, the subsequent years are gonna be four percent rate increases. Year after year for a for a whole bunch of years. And then I have to do this little decrease to rates over here to. Kind of stabilize my cash. Um, but that's, that gives you an idea that if you go from one eighty instead of one eighty, you wanna do one forty. Uh, then year, the the following years are gonna need some fours instead of one and a halves. Okay, let's look at a three year plan.
I'm sorry, before you switch that. One forty represents how much would would the.
Yeah, thanks. I'll 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 promise not to have to have you do that to me every time uh Caesar. I'll I'll try to remember next one. Okay, so rate schedule. So now we're going from four fifty eight to ten ninety nine.
For clarity purposes. That's the per thousand fee.
Correct.
That is.
The base fee.
No, 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 that would be the, that would be the average of five gallons as we related to before.
But so our base fee. Based upon the schedule that we have now would also go up.
Absolutely.
It actually would be uh seventeen dollars and seventy four cents.
I don't have that.
That's on the year one.
Yeah, we can look at that here too.
We could, we could show that we do have that.
Okay, so you'd be going from eight fifty three. To twenty forty seven on the base fee. And your first tier would be going from three forty seven to eight thirty two. Okay, these are just a hundred and forty percent higher than the previous number. And as was just pointed out, the the. Result of that is the average cost for the first five thousand would be ten ninety nine, up from four fifty eight to ten ninety nine. For the first five thousand. Okay, should I go to uh three year plan, Caesar?
Please go to the next one, yes.
All right, let's go through your plan. Okay, so three year plan. Uh, you see now a little bit gentler. So here we're looking at. Um, eighty percent in year one, fifty percent in year two, ten percent in year three, and then followed by a bunch of twos. Okay, so a little gentler. Uh, so again, eighty percent to fifty to ten. Now let's go look and see what that looks like. Over here. And we'll look at it. This. All right, so you're going from eight fifty three. To fifteen thirty five on the base. And you're jumping from three forty seven to six twenty four on that first tier.
Wouldn't I relate to for the five thousand average?
So we're going from four fifty eight to eight twenty four in this case. I mean, that that's just in year one. Let's remind ourselves, Caesar, that eventually you all end up at the same spot. It's just a question of how quickly. This is really what this presentation is about is you folks have to decide how aggressively. You're gonna get up to, you know, nearly fourteen, fifteen dollars is the average. With the all the assumptions in the model, there's no getting away from what it's gonna cost to run the business. It's just a question of how quickly you wanna get your revenues up. Uh, to to address. The needs. Okay. Um, so that's a three year plan. Let's go and do the. Five year plan. So the five year plan is forty, forty, thirty five, fifteen and ten. That's over the next five years. And you could see. Uh, little bit less. Um, aggressive here. And by the way, one of the effects of spreading these. Rate increases over time, obviously, it's a little gentler on the rate payers. It accumulates less money. So if I go back to the hundred and eighty. Uh, so the first one, remember there's a. Tearing off the Band-Aid just ends up with accumulating nearly thirteen million dollars of cash. As you spread this out longer and longer. So if I go back to the five year plan, you see that that peak has come down quite a bit. You can see though also. That you're hitting a low point here in twenty twenty five. Okay, that's, that's one of the perhaps the negative effects of spreading this out is. Uh, is is this um okay to to, is this putting the utility in a vulnerable position by letting the cash get so low? So that's a. It's a different question. Okay, let's go look at the uh, the rate schedule for this one. So. Here we're going from four fifty eight to six forty one. In year one, you know, up to eight ninety eight, twelve. You see how this one also eventually gets to around fifteen dollars. It just takes five years to get there. And if we look at the six year plan. Okay. So in this case, six year plan. You can see that um, you know, waiting too long, again, remember you got these big. Uh, you got these big projects to do. If you wait too long to build your rates up, then you're gonna be using a lot of cash and you're gonna end up. You know, down to a couple hundred thousand dollars of cash. So. You can see that as you wait, as as I, as you extend this to a seven year plan, eight year plan and so on, you're gonna reach a point where this black line is gonna start going below zero. You just. You can't afford to wait too long. If indeed this is the spending that is gonna happen in the next five years, you you just, you just simply need the money. And by the way, this is also, um, don't forget there's some borrowing in here. So the borrowing is help helping you buy some time. Uh, to build your rates up. So you're getting a lot of money from the bank. You're getting the help from the bank to do these projects while you're building up your rates.
And. And JP, if I may, guys, this is also understand this is pertinent on. Assuming that we actually get approval to go out and borrow, right? We we're we're assuming those things. Again, we will be as aggressive. As the direction that we receive. But it's been clear that we wanna address these water concerns and with the focus group that we've dealt with on capital improvements. It's very clear that water is the emphasis and we need to do it sooner than later. So I I wanted to focus on that. If the will is to stretch that even further, that's fine. JP, one thing we didn't talk about that uh that made me think about now, could you show the scenario if we don't do any of these? And if we don't. Do any increases, how far in the hole we're we're destined to be? I know I'm asking you on the spot.
That's all right. Let's call this uh S zero. And uh, so you're saying there's no increases to rates at all?
Correct.
And uh, and there's no, there's no borrowing?
No borrowing.
Okay, let's just make these zeros.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's this, this is fine. This is showing off the how how easy it is to do this with the with the software tool. All right, so. Uh, and so if all the spending is there, I mean, you you can just visually see that you just, your your revenues. Are just. You know, they're not, they're they're only half if that of the height of of all the spending. Right? If I compare, if you look at, if I get rid of some of these layers to make it not so busy here. And let's get rid of some of these smaller revenues, like you've got some other uh some other revenues, some non op- operating. So if we're looking at just. The revenues coming in from rates, these are these gold bars. Um, compared to the height, I mean, your rates right now don't even cover your operating expenses and your purchase water costs, right? This is the situation that you're in right now. Your operating expenses. Plus the cost of buying the water. Is not even being covered. By the rates. And in this scenario. You know, you're you're gonna be. I mean, you you just, you can't even maintain this for a year.
This is the stark reality that we're facing. This is what we discussed with our group when we had our our capital improvement meeting. Um, and we've been discussing uh throughout all of our public meetings, the budget pro- process. A little bit scary when you see. Put into figures like this. Um. JP, which was there anything else? Go go back to the twenty five percent option. What was that rate? What would that rate look like if we went to that in year one?
Uh, you mean the six year plan?
The six year plan. What does that look like year one? And and how does that look like spread about?
So four fifty eight to five seventy three to seven sixteen and then eventually it gets to. You know, in this case, it gets to seventeen dollars, but we'd have to do a little rate decrease here to bring it down. And this is an example of. If you spread it out too long. Uh, you're trying to catch up with your revenue needs, but then you might have to swing your rates down because you accumulated. Rates got too high. It's just a mathematical issue that. Um, you know, you're trying to avoid having to do rate decreases. Uh, because again, your rate peers don't like it when things go up and then things come down. It just kind of sends the wrong messaging. Uh, but here you have it. So four fifty eight, five seventy three to seven sixteen.
So. Back to going with SP two and what the general consensus has been statewide to make it a user based model. This is what a user based model is intended to do. It's supposed to relieve the general fund. Continue reducing property taxes and putting the expense on the user who has utilized the actual funds. So we wanted to showcase what that looks like and what that means. Um. JP, was there anything else you wanted to share? The sewer side?
Uh, the sewer side is um. Let's go look at that quickly here. So we only have one model on the sewer side. Uh, you can see um what's different here is on the sewer side, we've got, we're using a lot of grant funding here. So I I think that's the ARPA funding, some of it anyway. Is being applied.
Yeah.
But you've got a similar situation here where you've got, you know, some big projects. There's twenty three million dollars worth of something that you gotta do next year. And ten million. And so you got some big projects. We've got a. Uh, a rea- a capital reinvestment budget in the future here of three million dollars. And again, likely there's gonna be some peaks and valleys in the future, but at least we've got a. Placeholder in there. Um, the cash is staying quite steady along the target. And that's being done with something that looks like this. And I think we did, um. I think we did a gradual here. So we've got no rate increases for two years. Again, there's many different scenarios we could build here, but we've got in this case, no sewer increases for two years, followed by an eight percent, then a ten, then a. Then four fifteens. And then to try to make sure you don't accumulate too much. Cash, I've had to reduce rates by twenty percent. Again, I don't like doing that. I just did it for the purpose of making the math work in the model. Um. And we just also didn't spend as much time on the sewer side because it it doesn't seem like it's as big of an issue. As the water side, but we can certainly make. A bunch of different scenarios for the sewer side as well.
Again, the intention was for us to talk about water rate. Again, the intention was for us to talk about water rates. JP or Rake or Suzie, is there anything else you would like to share on the presentation?
I just wanna see something, can you go back to the three-year rate?
Three-year option, that was option three JP?
Yep.
About a hundred and forty percent, except?
Yeah, they they all technically equate to the same percentage, whether it's one forty or eventually to the one eighty, it's just a matter of how fast.
How fast, right, so the first year it goes up to, that's what I wanna go back over.
Yeah, the first year it goes up by eighty percent, it would jump from the four fifty-eight average to the eight twenty-four. Again, these are average for a five-thousand gallon home. This is per thousand gallons.
But if but but if that's done, gotta take us out the one-point-three deficit that we that we're having.
This this would move us along those lines, just understand that it would be a gradual increase, year one would be eighty, year two would be fifty, then ten, then two all the way through, so this is not a complete tear the Band-Aid off, but it's it's semi-aggressive if you want, and I think that's the direction that we got, we wanted to see different scenarios of what it's aggressive and then more paced, and that's what we presented here for you today.
I'm having a senior moment, I can't see that very well.
I'm sorry, and and this is so advanced and I didn't this is the workshop setting, I wanted to have it in the setting so everybody understood how any tweak of one number can adjust the others. We are open to suggestions, we can look at any scenario you want to right now. As JP showed as quickly as I said, show me a zero percent option, what that looks like, I really he was able to do that. We want this to be a cohesive decision. We want this to have plenty of thought. But the overall factor is that we need to get somewhere to address these concerns. You know, the public has spoken, council has taken that direction, given us that direction to make sure that we present something that will get us where we need to be. These are not favorable, obviously, because they they, you know, anytime they're talking about an increase, but I wanna go back to say we haven't increased it since twenty-eleven. And this is just a first in a series of things, Suzie and I are working on a different project. Rick as well to talk to you about all the different other rates, but I I really wanted to get you to this point, and and please Suzie, Rick, they're they're them and and their tireless work from Waterworth on this is is really, really important, I do not wanna discount the work that they put in, because we had to look at this from many, many, many different scenarios to bring this to where it'd be a little bit more palpable, these are just the options we have so far. I got a chance to witness it, if anybody have any questions that you'd like for us to address, or any scenarios you'd like for us to draw up. I think JP's gifted enough to do that pretty quickly with this software.
We have any questions?
You have any questions at this time, Council?
I do. Hi, everyone, I'm Councilwoman Casey. I, this is also just a brass tacks question about that year's tree plant or the the three-year plan. That is the one I'm most drawn to, just based on your presentation. Could you give me the whole number of like what that average bill would be for the average person, I know Rick said it's around fifty-five hundred gallons? Just would like to wrap my head around what people are paying now and what we could expect they will pay with this next year.
Yeah, JP, if you just create a rate card that uses that same but times five, that twenty-two dollars. That would get you to five thousand gallons.
It is is the is the question that you wanna look at it in terms of what I'm showing now, which is the average per thousand for those first five thousand, or do you wanna see what the rates will actually look like?
No, I wanna see, I wanna set myself in the shoes of the average consumer, and if it's the average household, average residential bill is a is accommodating fifty-five hundred.
Usually men on this a little bit. JP, if you don't mind, so we can take a look at it together, so there you go. Year right now is at four fifty-eight, in year one, it looks like it goes to eight twenty-four. Then it gradually, the the increase is reduced to twelve thirty-seven, and then it kind of tails off a little bit. But also trying to keep into account for inflation, we're only looking at two percent going from that point on. It's ten to two, 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 two.
I, yes, I I understand that, I'm just asking for I'm just trying to get the shortest answer to the the shortest distance to what would the average household pay?
Yeah, so the way that you'd wanna do that JP is if you go back to step five point two. And then if you just change this average rate, and you can change it so it's not saying average rate per thousand, just like average bill and and change it to twenty-five nineteen.
Twenty-five dollars and nineteen cents?
Yeah, that would be times five point five for fifty-five hundred gallons.
Okay, so is is that gonna answer, is that, so twenty-five nineteen is five times the four fifty-eight?
It's five point five times that.
Yeah.
The the average, average.
I don't think the math works quite like that Kelvin, I think we have to buy an extra five hundred dollar, another five hundred gallons at the rate in that tier. Am I going to the right place, counselor, so you wanna see what the total bill is for that period consuming fifty-five hundred gallons? Just wanna make sure I understand the question.
Yes, so Rick mentioned earlier, average usage in our city is fifty-five hundred gallons. So what I would like to do is project if I am that average fifty-five hundred gallon water user, and we have changed to this three-year plan, and next year we've gone up eighty percent, what is my bill that I'm in the average bill I would get?
The total dollar amount for that bill?
Total dollar.
Okay, let me tell you that in a second here, so.
I could do that real quick, I did the math, I took eight point two four times five point five, and I came up with forty-five thirty-two, so it would jump from twenty-five nineteen to forty-five thirty-two, Councilman.
Okay. And part of why I was asking, just like, what's that total number is, I know earlier, there's a lot I get real turned around when we start talking about our our first thousand gallon, thousand gallons, and you know, just like the different tiers. I'm not really interested in that, I just wanna know like for the average person, what that would look like. Okay, so it's around forty-five dollars?
That would be the year one.
And then
figure show.
And then in year two. It's.
I have to, I have to look at that chart real quick to look at that, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I wanna follow up on Casey's questions. I wanna see all this printed out, just like her question. Wanna see it in black and white. You know, actually, I want the rate so that everybody can see them based upon the different scenarios. And 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 the other, the other item that that it's it's more of an observation on my part in my method of comprehending things. The comment was made that we that we're not covering our cost of water, somebody said that. I would almost like us for, and maybe this is gonna be one-on-one with you, Mr. City Manager, with Rick. But I would like to to get an understanding of let's, let's start deconstructing the bill. What's at the bottom, at the at the basis, at the easiest level? With without all the repairs to the lines and things of this nature. What what's our cost there? What's necessary to provide water to the city of Lamarck? What's that base cost? And and then and then understand the add-ons from there, I almost wanna see a menu. It doesn't make sense. Is is, here's the the just our base. If if we didn't have anything, we didn't do anything, and understanding that this is what we have to cover, we have to cover this.
Did you do that in the workshop, I mean, the budget workshop?
I did do it in the budget workshop and in the retreat, but actually.
But the numbers were wrong, you were, the assumption, the numbers were not right.
Right, but I mean, the scenario we just did now shows you accurately what.
Yeah.
But you you.
I've got a test of it, this is an Italian word, it, you know, and please, 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 it's like you're a teacher, Miss Yancy, please forgive me, I'm not perhaps the smartest one on and 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 the math, the math form. But for all of us, right, for just for all of us in my mind, I just simply wanna understand. There's a history here with our water department. And 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 the other discussion that we haven't had, these water rate increases are also tied to our sewer rates. As the water rates go up, when I look at my water bill, there's an increase in my sewer cost as well, is that correct?
Yes and no, so what we're looking at right now is it's gonna go up. Right now, we have basically one utility fund. But the rates are still separate, so you get charged for the water you use, there's a there's a wastewater rate. And what what they were covering earlier is our wastewater fund is in much better shape than our water. We don't need to raise our sewer rates, our wastewater rates nearly as much as our water rates, the water rates is the ones that are hurting, when you look at our cost to deliver water, so when you when you ask that question, let's think about what we have to do to deliver water, right, so we take water from a take point from Gulf Coast water. We bring it through the city, through pipelines that we have to maintain. We all agree that we have to put that water in storage tanks. We have to pump that water from seventeen sixty-four tank point, we pump it all that water, they drop that water into a ground storage tank, it's not pressurized. We have to repressurize it. So there's a cost to run those pumps. We can break down all those costs for you, I mean, we know what they are. At the end of the day, what we're trying to do is deliver tap water to your home. And in order to do that, we have to maintain the system. So you gotta have personnel, we gotta have trucks. You do have to, admittedly, if you got underground pipes, which we know you have to fix them, because otherwise they're gonna blow and leak, if you don't repair them, what do you do then? So all that is is really that operating cost that they they were talking about in 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 the rate study, that that big blue section, the O and M cost, so we have this big cost on buying water. Buying the waters, the cheap part for everybody. It's cheapest thing out there, when you're in the water business, producing water through a water treatment plant or buying water, however you do it, is the cheapest part of the water. The more expensive part is giving it to your home to your tap. And that is, that's always the elevated cost, but in order to come up with a cost to deliver that water to your home, you have to use both, you have to use what it either costs you to buy it or cost it to pump it out of the ground and produce it, treat it. But once you put it in the pipe, you still gotta get it across town.
And and I guess that's where I'm coming from, I'm coming from the simple mind of mine is saying, look, folks, we have people on fixed income in this community, we have seniors. Do you expect me tomorrow to say, number one, that tomorrow, let's have a hundred and eight percent increase in the water bills to get out of this, my answer is no. I'm not gonna do that.
So.
That would be, but but. And what I'm also saying is that this, it's it's the discussion of any water rate increases has to include a discussion of the sewer rates. Because you just said, we don't have to, we're gonna have to visit that fee structure on the sewer rates if we increase the water rates. That's what you you said, that we don't have, we're in a better cash position on the sewer side.
Right.
And therefore, we don't have to necessarily charge those fees that we're charging right now, that's what I heard.
We don't, we don't have to raise the wastewater, the sewer fees nearly as much as the water.
I that's.
We one of the scenarios he said is you could almost leave him alone for a couple of years, because our revenues are kind of okay. Eventually, you're gonna have to start raising those sewer rates, because we're gonna have some costs in order to maintain the sewer system also. But this the sewer rate doesn't go up at the same level that the water rates go up. I guess that's what I'm trying to clarify, just because the water rates are going up does not mean that the sewer rates could go up, you could you could do a a twenty percent increase on water and and a two percent on sewer. And you don't have, you don't have to raise the.
I understand the what I'm saying is that the bills, the way they're structured now are based upon usage. There's an increase in the sewer rate when there's an increase in the water, right, the usage.
Well, usage.
Tomorrow, we.
Usage.
It's the usage.
Right, but 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 again, just to if you consume two thousand gallons in your home, I'm not sure what you're making, but I'm assuming, let's say, two to three thousand gallons. Well, your rate is based on what you consume, not on what you pay for the water. If your consumption goes down, then your sewer rate, consumption rate would essentially go down, correct me if I'm wrong, is that not how it's calculated?
Right, the sewer rate, I believe, is like two seventy per thousand, so once again, there's a base rate of of for sewer. If you're not using any water, help me Suzie, because you got the other number, I think, because I don't have it on my hand.
We weren't prepared to talk about.
But 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 if if right now, the the base rate for water with a thousand gallons of water is at that eight eight fifty-two or eight thirteen, help me.
The base, eight fifty-three.
So eight fifty-three, thank you, sir, so the base rate for sewer is seventeen, I believe it is. And that's what, that's a thousand gallons of water, so you're not even in town. You're gonna get a bill for twenty-five bucks. For water and sewer, if you use three thousand gallons of water, you're gonna pay.
Plus trash, it's all included.
Right, but that's a separate issue, right? I mean, as far as water rate, so if you use three thousand gallons of water, you're gonna pay that base rate plus a thousand at the one incremental rate, plus you're gonna pay the other thousand at the other increment. The sewer doesn't have incremental rate increases, it's two seventy per thousand, I believe. So whatever gallons you use over that first thousand gallons on on sewer, you're gonna pay two seventy. What I'm trying to clarify is that just because the water rate increase is going up twenty percent or thirty percent, doesn't mean that your wastewater rates going up twenty or thirty percent.
I see what you mean there, just.
Is that clarifying that?
The amount, it's yeah, on that side, but there is a tie in there, and I want, I want to see a complete picture.
Gotcha, I mean, the more water you use, the more rate you pay, because everything's going up, but that's based on usage, not.
And then the other third third component is that, once again, because it's all in one bill, we get one bill. We have to visit the isn't the the solid, the waste management contract also.
Solid waste is something that we're going to, it's not coming up, it's it's actually in place for quite a while. But I will tell you, that is an area of of concern that we do need to look at, because again, we weren't prepared to talk about that right now, but that rate's been going up steadily, three percent each year, to which there's been no increase since its inception, and right now it is costing the city money to process, to pay waste management, to collect everybody's trash. And I just, that's just, again, unfortunately, you bear the weight of having to deal with things that have not been addressed for years. And I'm I'm sad that that's the case, but it's just part of what it is, most cities incorporate a percentage increase to match or equate slightly above what the contractual balance would be. And it looks like until the last time when it talks its sanitation, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe the last time you touched that rate was a few years ago. So as a result, it's continued to rise by contract, I mean, you know, previous council, whenever this contract was signed, agreed that there would be an increase of said amount. However, you never increased your rate to match that, so as a result, while it was looking great for a while, some of this, it's now become below what we actually expect.
Go back, just maybe it's once again, it might be one-on-one.
That's right.
Online, what's her her base cost to do business? And then and then and then and then and then for me, in my mind and my way of thinking is that we're doing things now, thank you, Mr. City Manager, thank you, fellow councilors as well, we're doing things now and identifying other alternative sources. We have, we have, this city has never had a historical relationship with the Texas Water Development Board, that accurate?
Okay, to my knowledge.
So so they provide grants. They provide forgivable loans and to provide low-interest loans on on infrastructure and things of this nature. So in my little simple mind, before I even look at this, I wanna have a complete picture to say, look, folks, these are things that we can take to the board as well as 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 my backup on the Houston Galveston Area Council, we also have HGAC as a resource there, I was just looking at the Water Resource Committee, it's meeting later this week, their agenda. Looking at that last night. And they have resources there, they've got a plan to move water, and then the last thing, the last thing in this area is that and it and it came from you, Mr. City Manager, when I voted against those increases with the Gulf Coast Water Authority, you represented, oh, that by the way, they're going to be out there helping us. You represented, oh, that by the way, they're going to be out there helping us identify. Well, hold, I wanna hold, I wanna see that accountability. If they said that that's gonna happen, I wanna.
And 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 also, I I wanted to to touch base on that, too. As this model was created, we took all those into perspective. That's how we were able to be as aggressive as possible, is taking advantage of some of those partnerships that are in place. Um, what we're intending on doing here is having state revolving funds that we would approach. Could some of them be forgivable based on our LMI and based on how well we perform in the projects? Yes. And then at that point, we can come back and hopefully show a decrease in our rates to match. But we can't know that that's gonna happen. We can't anticipate we're gonna apply for grants. And one thing we've noticed here is we can't wait. For the grants to happen. But the best part about these chunks that we've done is we've laid out a capital improvement plan for fifteen years. Worth of capital improvements that we are ready to show you whenever we're done with this process. That's fifteen years of work, and the primary focus of those grants is water, because we have identified that to be our biggest need. The last thing we wanna do is to be in a situation where we're as a Flint, Michigan, or as a Jackson, Mississippi. We're trying to prevent that from happening as fast as possible to make sure that we deliver our residents the highest quality water that we can provide them. Now, that's a task that was provided to us. We've done some presenting state revolving funds. Do we hope some of them will be forgiven? Absolutely. What that'll do is it allow us to get to our fifteen-year plan a lot faster. We only showed you, I think, three or four years worth of borrowing. All right, we did that because we are confident that some of those loans will be forgiven, and then some of those funds can be earmarked to move down the line more aggressively. We've identified at four stages of of C I P plans, and a lot of our water loss, we identified to be what we call trickle uh leaks. That are primarily in our two-inch water lines. We we split up the the city in four zones, which we wanna address at least two of the zones first. And then progressively go from there. And that's what we've done that in that sense. We are, we are being very aggressive on any opportunity that comes across us. To address it, and we're open to any other considerations. But we have a mindset to follow sooner rather than later. If at the very minimum, and if you can, if you can go back to our PowerPoint, JP, real quick, before we go to our PowerPoint. I wanted to showcase what we have on the screen here. This is, a- again, this is preliminary based on what you just asked us to do. I just asked JP to do this while we were talking as to what this scenario looks like. That black line seat drop off that occurs in twenty twenty-four and where that goes. That point right there where he's at is where we will be by twenty twenty-four. We'll be negative. I mean, I can't tell you where it all the way goes to. But that's where it is. Now, what those numbers equate to, I understand you asked us today to get you a a base, base costs. And 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 to create a menu, if you will, and that's something we could do to quantify those things. Cuz we wanna bring forward what's accurate and is tangible, so you understand. But right now. I'll be very honest, if our if 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 our utility side was a business, and we have many folks in the building that have been involved in business for a very long time. That R U B side may have closed doors. And I'm just being honest, based on where we are, based on what we have now, without doing a single bit of capital infrastructure.
When you say, or the presenter J P talks about debt over here, that's assuming certificates of obligation.
Or say revolving funds or bonds or whatever method.
But I I I'm gonna suggest something else. And this is why I'm looking for that total amount. In my mind, is that, look, folks. Here's our operating cost on a daily basis. Here's what we need to 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 repair the sixty percent water loss that we have on our existing water lines right now. We know the inflation, you talked about it, the cost of doing business, the things of that nature. So so one alternative is to increase these water fees monthly to forty-five dollars a month. For the average. Okay, what's another alternative, folks? Would 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 the alternative be to go ahead and put together for the for a vote, a bond amount? A bond election that says, we'll increase our taxes by one cent or two cents because it will take care of these things versus. An increase in our monthly water bills? That's what I'm looking for.
And this is what I wanted to show now. What you're seeing on the screen shows zero capital improvement. This is doing nothing.
That's what I'm seeing.
This is, this is right now, the model you're looking at is if we do nothing else, don't do any water repairs or anything else. And keep your rates where they are now, you'll be over two, I can't tell where the the, I mean, it's so steep that you can't tell how far it's going. But by twenty twenty-four, you're gonna be more than two million in the hole, in in the negative. Which is ne- is contrary to the model that S B two speaks to, that the public has 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 clearly stated that they want us to be user-based. And quite frankly, one that makes the most sense.
If if I can interject, this might help a little bit. One of the things that we're looking at with the state revolving funds is is extremely low interest rates. They're 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 pushing down around two percent right now. You can't borrow money on bond at that kind of rate. The new infrastructure load of money coming down through pipeline will be distributed through S R F funding. They're required to forgive thirty percent of that. By 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 federal law. So, once we apply. To do these projects. Certainly, there's a possibility, maybe even a good possibility. That some of the twenty-five million dollars that we have in C I P right now to replace the two-inch water lines would be forgiven. I'm not gonna tell you that's gonna happen. I'm just telling you, it could happen. The 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 that's that's the way the laws are written. We've gotta put the projects in. They take a lot, they take a look at us along with all the other communities. There's a lot of money on the table there. So it's. It's possible, maybe even likely, that we would get some of that loan money forgiven. That may be a better option than doing a a a bond. You know, that to go to the vote and 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 paying for it through taxes rather than having the water fund support itself. And and that's what we talked about during the original budget meetings is. Council, you run two, you run two different systems out there. One of them is is a public service system, which is general fund. Maintaining streets, sidewalks, lights. All that's paid with taxes. Water funds and wastewater funds, you gotta put your business hat on. You're you're running a business, you're buying a commodity, you're delivering it to somebody's house. Think of Amazon. You buy something, you deliver it, you gotta sell it. Amazon makes money on every delivery they do to a door. You and I both know that. We have to make money on water. And it's a, you're selling a commodity, and same thing with wastewater. We have very high expenses. To collect wastewater, treat it at the wastewater treatment plant. So there's, there's two different things there that that sometimes you always gotta remember. When you get into the utility funds, the enterprise funds, you gotta put on your business hat because you're really running a business. And and that business has to pay for itself. You're, it it costs you that line, you're you're looking up there, and there's a certain. Cost to run to run the operation. And there's, and we have a certain cost to buy water. If we if we had our own treatment plant, which I've had in my previous life. You would have a cost to produce water. You pump it out of the ground, you put it through a treatment plant, it's still a cost of water, whether you're buying it or you're making. That's why Gulf Coast, that's what they do, right? They get water out of a river, create it. They sell it to us at a pipe. We buy, it's two bucks a thousand, less than two bucks a thousand, is what we buy water. The cost is getting it to your tap.
And so, again, I I. We could adhere to this. We could look at this as fast as possible to get this done. I wanted to illustrate what what is um. The 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 point of this, that that I wanted to make sure is, just to correct you, Rick, real quick, a business is intended to make money. We're not even trying to make money. We just wanna break even. And right now, we are far from breaking even. And that's before we implement a single.
And and the reason I say making money is what JP referred to earlier. Eventually, you wanna be able to get your utility where you can do. A few hundred thousand dollars, half a million dollars worth of projects because you're doing it out of your capital reserve fund. If you don't have a capital reserve fund, then you don't have that money. You gotta go over here and borrow. And then you pay more money for that money. You can keep doing that, but if you can put money in a capital reserve fund. Then when you wanna go out, we're gonna be placing water lines forever. I mean, they never go away. You put water lines in the last sixty, seventy years, you gotta go back in and replace them again. Kinda like streets, same thing, gotta keep replacing. All the stuff is just rejuvenating. It's a matter of laying everything out. And right now, what. Mr. Garcia explained is we've got a pretty firm commitment to do about twenty-five million dollars worth of water. But in order to commit. In order for me to go to finance, Suzie won't sign off on it if we don't have a way to pay for it, right? So once we put those projects in. To the S R F funding. There's still a payback. It's lower, low interest rate.
Lower than a bond.
Way lower than a bond, and some of it may get forgiven. So that's, that's what we're planning on doing, but we need to come to you and get some assurance that if we do all this. And we we wanna do these projects, and keep in mind, these these two-inch water lines have been in in a in a plan in Lamarck since twenty sixteen. We've just never done it. Now we're getting serious, let's do it. Because we know we're paying extra money for water that's leaking out of pipes. We we need to stop, stop that loss. And the only way to do that is replacing water lines rather than. Fixing leaks at twelve inches per foot, which is costing us money anyway. That's all we're doing right now. We're still replacing the water line, we're just doing it in twelve inches.
And the other part of that is whenever you replace a line here, down the line, likely, if you have not made the repair all along, you have another break, and then we're back into this over and over.
Same old pipe, right, right here, it's right there, right?
JP, did you, did you guys have anything else before we go back to our PowerPoint here? Obviously, we have some follow-up to do on this.
No, I'm good, Caesar. I just needed to know if you need me um after this meeting.
I'll 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 get with you in a second here. I think we're gonna have a break in the action. Kyle, could you put this back up, the the rest of the PowerPoint? I wanna just take it, I said we would come back to our PowerPoint after they were done with that. I wanted you guys to see where we are at the process. Obviously, we put in quite a bit. This is looking at what the rate would look like. I know that everything up top looks very squiggly. I want you to look at where we are down at the bottom. This would be the cost per thousand gallons at that five, get five thousand gallon synopsis of what it would look like. The last of the scenarios, that the whole twenty-five percent gradual growth. Would look like six dollars and seventy-seven cents. This is the forty percent model. So I take that back. It's the five-year, not the six-year plan. Thank you, Rick. So this is not the least aggressive, but this is the one that's forty, forty, thirty-five, fifteen, and ten. The cost per uh thousand gallons would go from uh the four fifty-eight to the uh to the six seventy-seven, which still. Equates very low on the line of some of the other increases that are going on. And you're gonna see a lot of the other folks on that list also increase their amounts. But what that equates to is a monthly increase of ten, ten dollars and ninety-seven cents per household, on average, again, on average. Or an average increase of thirty-six, roughly counted thirty-seven cents per day. Go, before you go to the next slide, go back to the second slide, Kyle, if you don't mind. I won't go, go back, go back to the twenty-two. Yes, this one. At six seventy-seven, we're still above Bayview. But we're still not where some of the other, excuse me, above uh watered uh W C I D eight, which is Santa Fe. But still below Dickinson and Hitchcock and Kima. Now, mind you. This is last year's rates. Every one of these folks has already said they're gonna increase. A lot of these folks are actually looking at us for being proactive to see what they're, what we're gonna do, to see what they're gonna do. Um, and quite frankly, that's fine if they wanna have us lead the charge, if you will. I'm not worried about leading. In that sense, I'm worried about leading because I want everybody in this community to have clean water. And that's the the basis of my concern. At six seventy-seven, this is where we land now before their increases take place. What will happen inevitably is everybody else on this list is going to increase their rates because their rates are going up by roughly twenty-three percent. So trust and believe that they will also go up accordingly. Go back to the second to last slide, Kyle, I'm sorry, keep doing this. That's what we're talking about for scenario four, what it looks like year one. Looking at an increase of thirty-six cents per day, a monthly increase of roughly eleven dollars. And the uh cost goes from four fifty-eight to six seventy-seven. We've had residents boast here. Uh, within our city that their water rates are indeed lower than some of their, you know, other rates, whether it be sewer sanitation, if you will. Go to the last slide, if you don't mind. I I I wanted us to look at this from the perspective of where we are. All right, thankfully, gas is coming back down. But look at the rates of where we are. Water delivered to homes and businesses equates to, I mean, I can't even tell you what that decimal point is, but that's that much less per gallon. All right, the average price of water for a thousand gallons is five dollars and eighty-two cents, and they will be increasing by twenty-three percent. So we can go back and we can get to this base cost, and we can create that menu and look at the daily cost. You wanna know what the daily cost would be? It's hard to say per day because it would be related to how it relates to usage, right? Um, but what it costs us to operate our program as it is now per day, we can break that down, take our budget divided by three sixty-five and give you that number. So we can bring that back. I think we've got clear direction, Rick. Uh, JP, Suzie, all of us on the call, we will bring that back to very quickly. If we can bring that forward. I would like to know if the will is for us to have a follow-up workshop, or would you rather us introduce? Have you had enough of the meat potatoes now? You want us to re-workshop this for the twentieth? Because we need to do something soon because by day, we are dipping ourselves deeper into that hole.
So you said the fourth option is what you recommend?
That, well, that's the one that we thought was. More middle-tiered, not really middle-tiered, it's actually more the lower tier. Out of the the six options, sorry, five options presented, cuz there were two one-year options, a three and a five and a six. We were asked to bring three options, we brought you back five. We looked at very different scenarios, some very aggressive, some less aggressive. I'll be very honest and tell you, if you look at the scenarios JP presented, the first option, although it's a very drastic jump in the beginning. It's also the one that costs a residence at least in the long term. Because as as he mentioned, the rates go up a little bit more more at a time. Um, we were at your will to take this to whatever level you wanted to take it next. Uh, but we're ready to proceed as as you wish. Um, we were gonna do a brief synopsis for some of the residents who may have not been able to be here uh for the workshop. Uh, but I think at this point, we probably table that until you told us differently.
And yeah, I do. Um, I mean, I I I think unfortunately, I mean, it's. I wish that we had kind of gotten to the point of saying, which do you want a little sooner in this conversation? Cuz I mean, that's. I I I don't want us to keep workshopping this and looking at the same, you know, data. I think we. I agree, we need to make a decision soon, and I hate to put together this, you know, that software is. As boggling as it is, it's obviously very data-filled and super informative, and I think we have some good things in front of us. Obviously, we're not at the will of the council right now to like vote on anything. And and I think that's mainly because I think I might be um. Rep- misrepresenting Councilman Confian's feelings, but like the idea of a menu, I think he was talking more. Specifically for like what things look like for the uh consumer, but for us, in order to pick, you know, I think. I need to see just next to each other, like, what is it that you are, you know. What you just said, what you are proposing, what you recommend, uh, Mr. Garcia, and. What that implies for the citizens over the next few years. Each of those like top choices next to each other. Cuz like you said, you you pulled all the data, like, we have everything we need. For me, I'm very inclined to pick that three-year plan, but um. Uh, sorry, I'm just sort of talking in my thoughts right now, um, into a point. And so I think what need, I I I don't wanna have a whole other workshop. I don't see the point of another workshop. But um, I would say this needs to be an agenda. I don't know, we need to vote. Soon.
Thanks, Casey. Yeah, did you wanna?
Just so you all know, this is an item under new business and your six o'clock meeting.
And our six o'clock meeting, thank you. And and the direction, the the reason for that item was to decide whether you want us to bring actionable steps back or what you wanted us to bring back based on the results of the workshop. Yeah, our our internal proposal was option four. That's the one that we tabulated. We we internally, as a staff, we understood the sensitivity of going high, thank you, Rick, to going too high. Uh, we wanted to make it as palpable to all the residents as well, um, who are gonna feel the brunt of it. Although it is gonna cost a little bit more in the long run, based on what it's gonna cost, it's also a much more gradual increase should we get there. It's a little bit more conservative. But I would open the floor, I mean, maybe if you will, if anybody else would like to come. But I would open the floor. I mean, maybe if you will, if anybody else would like to comment on that. Cause I, we, we, we like to get to where we want to at least know what direction we have because it's tying up how we're gonna present our capital improvement. Um, and how we're gonna go that route. Um, I do say that um whether we go bond, C O, uh, whatever you want to have, we can do a survey if you want us to put one out, whatever you would want us to do. Um, I would still tell you the state revolving funds is the best, most lucrative one because it is the lowest percentage rate and allows us the chance for most to be forgivable as to how we're gonna fund the, these capital improvements should we go that route. Also, it allows us the flexibility to continue to apply for some of these grant programs that are out there. And if indeed we are able to do that with those funds, we can then attack the next phase because we didn't, we couldn't fit all, all the issues. The truth is, is water repairs should be ongoing. They should be every year, just like we should have a certain amount of money for our sidewalks every year, should have a certain amount for our streets every year, should have a certain amount for our water lines every year. That's how you do preventative maintenance. That gets us to that number that was more palpable that we were in, in um trying to get to in this presentation that from our understanding and, and historical background has never existed for the city of Lamarck. We've never had that before. And I think in an effort of trying to be more proactive, this is how we get there. And again, unfortunately, this has been a long, ongoing project that, that has gotten us to this point, but this is where we are now. So thank you.
Cool.
I, I want to hear people, people, please call me. Let me know what your thoughts are. That's all I ask. So the uh, it's not a decision that's up to me alone.
Sure.
I want to, I want to hear from, from residents. Bottom line.
Yeah, and may, if I may, likewise. Please give me your input. Please give us what direction you'd like to go in so we could work those scenarios in. Um, in whatever capacity that we would need to go. Um, what drove this was some resident input on our focus group on the capital improvements as to what we'd like to see. Um, that's what drove us to be this aggressive, that and the results and a collection of the open meetings that have occurred for the past six months that I've been here has been all about fixture water lines, fixture water lines, fixture water line. So in that extent, that's what we're trying to address here.
Kim.
So based on what people have told me and my constituents and also dealing with the water pressure, which has always been an issue on the mark since the first time that I, we moved back in nineteen ninety-seven from Austin. Pressure was an issue then too. Um, and also the water lines were issued then too. And that's why a lot of people moved away between ninety-seven and two thousand and five due to some of the infrastructure issues that we had in the city of Lamarck. So I'm excited that we're trying to come with, with some definite solutions to it. Um, I'm leaning a little bit more towards four. I like three, two. But I know because of some of, we have a lot of single families in Lamarck and I think gradual may be better. Those of us that have swimming pools, that'll help. So, um, but I do know that it's time to fix it and stop uh trying to put this problem that has been a notorious problem in Lamarck on the next year. Right? So I think it's time for us to, to put something definite in place. I'm ready to put it on the agenda so we can make a definite vote on it so we can start fixing our water issue, especially with the pressure. I like good pressure.
And, and, and if I may, this item would come before you as an ordinance. It would go through a two reading process, correct me if I'm wrong. Which means if you wanted us, if you take the action on the new business tonight to tell us to bring that back, first reading wouldn't be until the twentieth of September, second reading wouldn't be until the tenth of October. Again, we're here to serve at your will. I'm open to any discussion anybody would like to have. I've left cards uh here in the front at the podium. Uh, cause I'm, I'm open to whatever solution. I think the one thing we can all agree on is we all on every side want our water problems fixed and uh we're ready to take whatever reception necessary to get there. What's, how we get there will be determined on what direction we receive.
Yeah, I, I think it's clear that this is uh new information tonight. Um, the council has not had any opportunity to have any input uh as relates to this information. We are seeing it for the first time uh in real time with everyone else. So I think it's um certainly wise for us to allow for a week of reflection uh and conversation with our constituents. See what the best course of action would be. So I'm inclined to do uh no more tonight than set next Monday for a vote. So I would be willing to support that.
And, and, and one note I would like to add is, once again, we built in to this rate study and this rate analysis, one of the things you brought up, sir, is the, the, the uh the payments on the expected S R F funds over those four years. Admittedly, if those payments were not there, if some of that money was forgiven through that loan process, council has the ability to re-look at those upcoming rates. If we, if you increase now to get us, you know, started with some commitment that they based on the study that we're looking at, that they're gonna go forty, forty, that thirty-five and fifteen, those other rates would change if we were able to fund those projects with some forgiveness. Because we didn't build that forgiveness into these rates. I can't do that. That's not, that's not being open enough to, to council and to the citizens. Right now, we've got those, those, those projects funded. Twenty-five million dollars worth of water line works through S R funding with payback over twenty years. At, at that two and a half percent interest. Yeah. So it's somewhat worse, you might say worst case scenario. On the, on the, on the good side, we may get some of that money forgiven. Um, those projects, you know, are estimated from engineering costs. They're, they're, they cost more now than when they were estimated back in twenty sixteen because of costing inflation. If we don't do them sooner, those, those construction costs, of course, will elevate um from there. So, yeah. Going to clarify that.
Yeah. Anything else, counsel? Clearly, S R, you have uh alarmed, you, you've, you've pressed the alarm button and we are all aware.
It was not the intention.
We are all aware uh of the difficulties within our water delivery system. Uh, but we're also aware now of the opportunities to remedy those difficulties. Uh, certainly those members that are with us from Waterworth, we want to thank you for your time and for your participation. Excellent. Excellent presentation, but we look forward to continue the dialogue. Uh, but before we go tonight, uh we do have uh certain other agenda items uh on this particular meeting and we're about fifteen minutes away from our regular meeting. So if there's nothing further on this issue, we need to move to item five C. And that item is citizens' participation, limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up to speak. Counselor may uh limit it to three minutes. Uh, if you wish to speak, you give the mayor your full name, your address and item you wish to speak about. Complies with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal tax would not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you're participating via telephone. If you're participating via uh smartphone, tablet or computer via the Zoom platform, you may press the microphone icon at the lower portion of your screen to mute and unmute yourself. Uh, if you are visiting with us a person, you may approach the podium to my left, to your right. Please give the mayor your name and item which you, your name, address and item you wish to speak about. You may be heard at this time. Kyle, is there any persons uh online wishing to speak? Here, are there any persons signed up uh in person wishing to speak?
Um, Mr. Harnish, did you want to speak at this meeting or the next meeting? The next meeting. Okay. So there are none for this meeting?
Very good. Thank you all. Item six, new business. Uh, six-one water rates. I say so.
At this time, we have a item on the regular agenda that would bring this for whatever new action you'd like for us to follow. Uh, we have nothing further other than thank you for listening. Um, I look forward for any discussion that anybody has so we can uh use that as part of our deliberation as we prepare what would be a final package for council to review. Um, my phone is always on, my email is always working and I'll get back to anybody soon as possible. We can schedule some time. And uh we will work uh together with the folks from uh Waterworth to and, and staff, Suzie, Rick, myself and all involved to get to the information that's been requested. Um, and we, we look forward to presenting you a final packet as to what it's gonna take to get us where it is we want to be. And uh, and I, I thank you for considering. I, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the group that was part of the capital improvement. Both the first public meeting where we had over forty residents and as well as the focus group that followed. I appreciate everybody's input because I think for those that are part of that, that were present tonight, uh, I, I, I really thank them for what was uh brought forward because uh their hard work, it did not fall on deaf ears and we are moving forward with the will of the residents as well. This was not something that was taken into account without uh their consideration on top of our need. Uh, I'll be honest and tell you, their, their support for these projects was greater than I would have ever imagined. Um, so clearly they are ready to take action and are supporting that action to be taken, at least the group of residents that we met. I see, I'd say a handful, more than a handful of those residents here and, and, and here now tonight. And I'm sure those will be listening via YouTube or at home uh are all, are all supportive of the recommendations that we're making, that we need to fix them. Now, which route we take, that's a difficult decision that we need to make together. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Say So. I assume that that moves us through six-two. Then have, we don't have anything uh for the good of the order. Which moves us now through uh item seven, no executive session. Item eight, no actions for executive session. Uh, from executive session, now we're at item nine, adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Is there a second? It's only us, Joe. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We stand adjourned for about ten minutes. Thank you all. So today we have with us the La Mark Fire Department. Representatives from the La Mark Fire Department. We also have representatives from, I believe, the La Mark Police Department, I see Chief Randall Argon, Sergeant Gene Crowe. And so if you all would come forward at this time, I would like to ask council if you all. Would object, I'd like to ask Councilmember Carlson to come down with me. Being that he is a veteran as well as a former firefighter like myself. Office of the Mayor for the City of La Mark Proclamation, where twenty one years ago in September eleven, two thousand one. The American people endured the worst attack on US soldiers in our region. And in response to this tragedy, Americans of the United States stand and take care of one another. Whereas two thousand two families of those killed and injured in nine eleven during the first response and other injuries nine eleven day. Has an annual day of service for all Americans to remember and contribute on anniversary of the grievous event. Through the act of proactive service and volunteerism honoring America's promise to never forgive. Whereas the show of America passed by Congress and enacted into law on April twenty first, two thousand nine. Ready by September eleventh as annual national day of service and remembrance. As a display to pay tribute to strength and resilience of the American people who serve Chinese and to community. And whereas by serving on this national day of service and remembering to honor those killed and injured. Pay tribute to those who have volunteered to serve in fashion, honor those who continue to serve our community. And whereas on September eleventh, twenty twenty two. And today's proceeding and following is that community members of the City of La Mark have the opportunity to honor the fallen and commemorate. The continued American spirit of resilience through service. Stepping forward and serving in a wonderful spirit of unity, honor and compassion. This year's September eleventh National Day of Service and Remembrance projects will help strengthen our community. While correlating the events of that fatal day more than twenty years ago. And now being resolved, the City of La Mark honors the tragic losses of September eleventh, twenty twenty two. I am proud to continue the efforts of the American promise to never forgive. And now therefore we, the mayor and citizens by virtue of our authority invested by the City of La Mark Texas to be a powerful plan. Nine eleven day. City of La Mark is prepared by our urgent ones and the community to observe this day of remembrance and service. Since when, whereas with the plan and the seal of the City of La Mark this eleventh day of September, twenty twenty two, we fail mail. Let's give these young people. Yeah, young people. But we all, I won't go over later to point out, I honor to the proclamation because of my. Now remember where I was. Fire station parade out of Texas, Seattle. When those planes crashed into those buildings. And I will never forget it. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. What you do for us each every day. Thank you for what you do for our community each every day. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask Councilmember Carlson to make certain remarks in the form.
I just want to say thank you for everything you've done today. I was, I remember where I was. Going through the data, I told you it was Washington. And got called to the fire station, the second time I've been called. So I remember that day. So thank you for everything you've done.
Good night to you from very quickly, Chief Argon, representing the police department, so the chief mayor representing the fire department.
Thank you, Mayor. I remember where I was. Two thousand one, I was going to give a cup of coffee below the name, so I'm all right. So the private plane, a few months later. Another flight took off. I think you all remember where that incident came from, eight point six. There, there's one hit. You'll never forget that. Didn't.
You know, I have to kind of recount what Chief Argon said, there's not a, probably not a soul in this, in this room that doesn't remember where they were that day. I just so happen to work in an area, but. We thank y'all for allowing us to serve you guys. This is, this is what we did. Thank you all for honoring the memories.
We do have another. Another proclamation for the police department. If you all would just join with me, let's just have a home sounds. Then we might remember sacrifices of those folks on September the. Two thousand. Thank you. Chief, you have your proclamation, chief mayor. Thank you. Very good. All right. We are now at item four two. A citizen recognition, citizens recognition, excuse me. Anaya Anria Filer. Is it Anria? I'm sorry. Ms. Filer? Could you help me pronounce your name? Anria, I'm so sorry, Anria. Welcome. We're glad that you're here. Councilmember Carlson.
Okay. As some of you know, last month I gave a gift card to a cross guard. In recognition for everything that she's done keeping our kids safe. This young lady on her way home from school. Somebody took somebody's wallet. She found the credit cards and the Venmo cards for that wallet and turned them in to her mom. They were fortunate to get. The person's wallet that they belonged to, they got cards back to them. So for doing the right thing and letting her mom know, hey, I found these. I'm going to present her a twenty five dollar gift card to Amazon.
All right. Good job, Anria. Good job, Michael.
Good hit.
Good job, good job.
Council regular agenda of September 12th, 2022. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarc, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on September 12th, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM in council chambers at 11:09 B by U Road, Lamarc, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to Section 551.127B, the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer and a quorum of the Lamarc City Council intend to be and will physically be present 11:09 B by U Road, Lamarc, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on Channel 16 and via YouTube. Council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Here, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and the pledge. O, Holy God, we certainly acknowledge your presence in this place. We thank you for this great city that we call home. For each and every member, Lord, we pray that you would lead and guide us tonight in all your wisdom, that we might do what's best for all of those, Lord, that call this great city, that call it home. We ask it all in Jesus' name.
A pledge of allegiance.
We are now at a point of presentation. So today we have with us the Lamarc Fire Department, representatives from the Lamarc Fire Department. We also have representatives from, I believe, the Lamarc Police Department. I see Chief Randall Argon, Sergeant Gene Crowe. And so if you all would come forward at this time, I would like to ask council that you all would object. I'd like to ask Councilmember Carlson to come down with me, being that he is a veteran as well as a former firefighter like myself.
Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarc proclamation, where 21 years ago in September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst attack on US soldiers in our nation. And in response to this tragedy, Americans of Colorado United stand and take care of one another, whereas 2002 family members of those killed and injured in 9/11 during the first response and other February 9th event had an annual day of remembrance for all Americans to remember and retribute on anniversary of these egregious events through the act of service and volunteerism honoring America's promise to never forgive. Whereas the Shield of America passed by Congress and enacted into law on April 1st, 2009, ready by September 11th as annual National Day of Service and Remembrance as a display to pay tribute to strength and resilience of community people who serve Chinese and to community. And whereas by serving on this National Day of Service and remembering to honor those killed and injured, pay tribute to those who have volunteered in service and profession, honor those who continue to serve our community. And whereas on September 11th, 2022, and today preceding my following this day, community members of the City of Lamarc have the opportunity to honor the fallen and commemorate the continued American spirit of resilience through service, stepping forward and serving in remarkable spirit of unity, honor, and profession. This year's September 11th National Day of Service and Remembrance projects will help strengthen our community while correlating the events of that fatal day more than 20 years ago and now being resolved for City of Lamarc honors the tragic losses of September 11th, 2022. I am proud to continue the efforts of the American promise to never forgive. And now therefore, we, the mayor and citizens by virtue of our authority invested by the City of Lamarc, Texas, to be a powerful plan 9/11. City of Lamarc is prepared by our 111 and the community to observe this day of remembrance and service. Since when, whereas with the plan and the seal of the City of Lamarc this 11th day of September, 2022, we fail mail. Let's give these young people. There are young people looking at somebody's face. But we all, I won't come up later at this point. I honor to the proclamation because of my can I remember where I was? Fire Station Gray, out of Texas, Seattle. When those planes crashed into those buildings and I will never forget it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for our speech every day. Thank you for our community speech every day. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask Councilmember Carlson to make certain they remarks at the point.
I just want to say thank you for everything you've done today. I was, I remember where I was going through the day and told you it was Washington. And got called to assume the local fire station, second power outage. So I remember that day. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks, everyone.
We'd like to hear from very quickly Chief Argon, representing the Creek Department, and Senator Chief Mayor, representing the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. I remember where I was 2001. Going to give a cup of coffee below the main store in Arkansas. Sort of private plane, you know, humans later do the way that another plane took. I think you all remember where that incident came about, 8.6. There's one hit. You'll never get that.
You know, I have to kind of recount what Chief Argon said. There's not, probably not a soul in this, in this room that doesn't remember where they were that day. I just so happen to work in an area that we thank y'all for allowing us to serve you guys. This is, this is what we did. Thank you all for honoring the memories.
We do have another another proclamation for the police department. If you all would just join with me, let's just have a honest thoughts that we like to remember sacrifices of those folks on September 2020. Thank you. Chief, you have your proclamation. Chief Mayor. Thank you. All right, we are now at item 42, Citizen Recognition, Citizens Recognition, excuse me. Anaya Anria Filer. Is it Anria? I'm sorry. Ms. Filer? Could you help me pronounce your name? Anria. I'm so sorry, Anria. Welcome. We're glad that you're here. Councilmember Carlson.
Okay. As some of you know, last month I gave a gift card to a crossfire in recognition for everything that she's done keeping our kids safe. This young lady on her way home from school, somebody took somebody's wallet. She found the credit cards and the Venmo cards for that wallet and turned them in to her mom. They were fortunate to get the person's wallet that they belonged to. They got cards back to them. So for doing the right thing and letting her mom know, hey, I found these. I'm going to present her a $25 gift card to Amazon.
All right. Good job, Anria. Good job, Michael.
Good.
Good job. Good job. We honor your service, Anria. We honor the fact that you did the right thing. And we thank Michael Carlson for rewarding your behavior. We hope that is, it's an example, not only to your classmates, but to the rest of our community and beyond. Thank you for that. 43, Texas General Land Office, Melissa Washington, Intergovernmental Relations Manager and Community Outreach Coordinator. Welcome again, Ms. Washington.
Hello, Mayor. Thank you so much for having me. I tilt this up just a little bit. I think we're going to do a little tag team tonight, but I am here today because I wanted to give you guys an overview of what has happened in the last five years since Hurricane Harvey. It's not going to take five years for me to go through it, but if you will, give me a little bit of time and a little bit of leeway. I want to go through some dates, some kind of key benchmarks on what happens in a federal grant, because I know you guys have been blessed to receive several of ours. And I want to make sure that everyone, not only on council, but in the city knows the route that it has to go through and what your role as a city is and what our role as the GLO is and how we can ultimately get those projects completed. So if it's okay with you guys, I'm going to start a little bit. And then I have a representative from Grant Works, who is your vendor, who will give you a project specific update. Um, so if you'll go to the next slide for me, I'd appreciate it. Again, I am Melissa Washington. I am the, one of the managers for the Intergovernmental Team. I lead a team that covers 31 Harvey affected counties. I personally cover three counties, Galveston, Fort Bend, and Brazoria County, a total of 43 cities included in it. So I get to meet a lot of different groups, a lot of different faces, but we're all working for the same project and we're all working for the same goal, to be able to not only recover, but become more resilient. So a little background on this presentation. Everything that I am going to say tonight is on our website at recovery.texas.gov. I can send you these dates, so you don't have to scribble them down quickly. But it is a wealth of information if you ever need to have that information. Everything I'm also going to say here is everything outside of Harris County. Because once this initial allocation was made, there were 47 counties. And then there was Harris County who received their own allocations as well as the City of Houston. So if at any time you guys need to stop me, feel, please feel free. I don't want to overstep or talk too fast. So please let me know if I need to slow down any. Again, this slide is the counties that were affected and declared after Hurricane Harvey. We all know again where we were August 24th through 29th of 2017. And it's days that people won't forget. And what people also sometimes do forget is how long it takes to recover from some of these storms. It took six months for Congress to appropriate $28 billion to multiple different storms from 2017. They are called Community Development Block Grants and they are run through the Housing and Urban Development Department at a federal level. HUD allocated those monies to the state of Texas and two overarching buckets. And on this slide, you'll see that 5.6 billion went to what we call disaster recovery. They also, for the first time, said 4.3 billion can go for mitigation, which is forward facing, which is let's figure out what the problem is so we don't have this problem again in the future. And again, multiple people were eligible for these different programs and I'm going to kind of go through the timeline of what happened since that February of 2018 date. And once HUD said Texas, this is the money that we're going to give you. Governor Abbott selected the Texas General Land Office as the state agency to administer those programs. We function as within the state to maintain compliance with all of the federal regulations that HUD puts on these funds. We do not do the programs that I'm about to speak of directly. We allow local governments to be able to enact their own programs. We are the facilitator, the administrator, and we make sure that you comply with everything that the federal government needs us to do. Because in the end, we all ultimately report to HUD and we are all subject to their auditing that happens every year. So if you want to go to the next slide, the first thing that happens with these funds, once we receive them, is we, they receive them through a federal register. They tell us the rules, the regulations on what we can do with our programs. The GLO then writes what are called action plans. That is the framework of how we can use this money. They have to go through public hearings. They have to go through comment processes and then they're approved by HUD ultimately before we send it out to local jurisdictions to provide us projects. Again, I won't go through all of these, but our two buckets. DR, which is a lot of what you may see on the street. It is our housing programs that build new houses for folks. It's our buyout and acquisition. It's our street projects. It's some planning issues. That was that first round. The second round is the large scale projects. Some of these mitigation things that are focused in making large scale regional change. So you for the most part, do not see these projects yet just because of the large scale nature and the planning that has to go behind them. And a small date line, if you will. The federal register, which is the rules for those DR funds, came out February of 2018. We were told in April 10th of 2018 that we would receive guidelines on that mitigation portion shortly, quote unquote shortly. The state action plan approved for the 5.6 billion in DR funds was in June of 2018. And again, you can see because those were approved first, you're seeing some of that in action. You're seeing houses come up out of the ground. Um, what did happen in October of 2018 was that a distribution plan was devised through HGAC with these DR money. And I'm sorry, please stop me if I start using government acronyms because there's a lot of them. HGAC, Houston Galveston Area Council, received funds and they split it up. Lamarc received 1.447 million dollars for that first infrastructure project. Where we start to get into the federal timelines is that it took 16 months for that shortly to occur, for us to get the rules on what we needed to do with mitigation funds. So after we received the rules in February of 2016, we started, we got through all the public comment, all of the hearings, and we were able to submit that final proposal to HUD. They approved that action plan, which was our rules and our program that we wanted to do in March of 27, 2020. And I would like to say that that DR project for 1.44 million dollars, you guys had your kickoff April 14th of 2020, 18 months after the announcement of that allocation. But again, that is because of federal guidelines that require hearings and comment and contracting. And in May of 2020, we kick off the application project for those large term, for those large scale projects. As many of you guys will remember, the first round was a competition of about $1 billion. And the jurisdictions prepared proposals, they submitted them and they were scored. You guys were very fortunate that in March 3rd of 2021, awards of about $31 million were announced and Lamarc received 7.49 million of those. That was for the 2015 storms. About two weeks later, it was announced that Lamarc again received money in the Harvey 2027 competition for $48.9 million. And again, on this project list, you'll see that those are the three projects that we have outlined there. The last one is a regional mitigation program, which was the second round of HGAC distribution, and they were able to split $488 million amongst the 13 counties and the cities within. And from that, Lamarc is slated to get another $4.16 million. And I can say that as of last Tuesday, that was given GLO final approval. But again, we've got to go through some contracting. We've got to go through all of those steps to be able to get there. What is important, now that you see your lined out projects and your programs, I need to stress that the city is the sub recipient of all of this money. You guys have a project. You have the ultimate authority in how that project gets gets to come to fruition. So what happens is that you will hire contracted vendors and, but you guys are the ones that will ultimately be able to be responsible for those vendors to be able to produce the project. And the kickoff meeting for that Harvey Round One and the 2015 meeting happened in December of 2021, which was about nine months ago. And there was a lot of folks there. As you can see around the table, we sat in this room. We talked through two different contracts and we're able to get a good team on board. That team, it consists of a grand administrator and an engineer for both of the projects. And just a second, I'm going to let them go through the specifics of those projects because the federal guidelines and the federal timelines are long and strenuous. We can't get around those timelines because the first thing that happens when you try to get around a timeline at a federal level is HUD starts to notice and they start to realize that this box wasn't checked, this requirement wasn't met. And the first thing that they do is come and say, okay, please explain. There are some things that are able to be explained and able to get exceptions to, but if not, the federal government says, thank you, but we would like that money back. And that's the last thing that this agency wants to do with anybody. We are here to support. We are here to give technical assistance. We're here to help you administer your grant. But in the long run, the city is, is ultimately responsible for making sure that everything gets done in the manner that HUD sets out for your projects, large or small. This is for 1 million, 100 million. It all goes through the same requirements through that federal register that has been approved. So, um, I'm going to not get into the nitty gritty of the projects because I am not an engineer and I am not a project manager. But I do know that you guys are in good hands. The one thing that I have been told over and over and over again from our local grant manager, who does talk to you guys probably about every three or four days, talks with city staff, is that you're on the right track. You're hitting your targets. You're hitting your benchmarks. And the most important thing about hitting those benchmarks is that you don't get reimbursed until you hit that benchmark. Because we are not a program that comes in with a check and says you now have $63 million in your operating budget. We are one that you're required to have certain benchmarks per your contract. The City of Lamarc will pay for a specific part of engineering. And once you can show that you have hit what that engineering benchmark is, you submit, or actually the vendor submits to the GLO and then you are repaid. Our timeline is about 30 days to be able to be repaid and reimbursed for it. So if you've hit all the benchmarks, if you've hit all of the deadlines, you will receive that money in totality, but it is not given at once thought. It is not something that a check can easily be written off of and it is not something that is, is a petty cash fund. It is something that is heavily regulated and needs a lot of different signatures and a lot of different timelines. And again, with any agency work or federal work, it's going to take time to receive those. We've got, yes, sir.
Could you repeat that last part, please?
That this is a reimbursement program and we must.
The regulation, how heavily regulated all of these grant funds are.
The one slide that I failed to do, the seven by seven that my husband always says should never be on a PowerPoint slide. I had to put all of this on there because we have an entire department. And I'm not quite sure how many people they are up to now, but all that they do is monitoring and compliance. They go through all the books. They go through everything. The City of Lamarc is required to have documentation of each of these projects located on site. So at any point, a GLO member or a HUD member can come in and review where you are in your process. The vendors will have theirs, but it is ultimately your responsibility to keep your records here during the project and after for a certain specific of monitoring time. There are audits and with the amount of money that has come into this city, it will be heavily audited because they want to make sure that funds that are coming in go to the right places, to the right people to help build a more resilient Lamarc. And that is the, the thing that I cannot stress more than anything. It takes time and it takes energy and it takes a team. But the one thing that has to happen is we've got to follow the timeline and the checkmarks that HUD gives us because there have been times throughout the country that there are findings of people who misuse their funds and they are immediately taken away. And if you've spent $10 million and they want nine of it back, there's a lot of people that end up having problems in, in the end, because they didn't follow the specifics of it. The GLO has no financial piece in this. We are not fiscal partners in this. We are just the administrators to make sure that you guys can have fruitful projects to be able to make sure that the citizens are fully covered. So again, the, and I can get a copy of this to you guys as well. There is a very strict monitoring of it. There's a very strict auditing process and these funds will get looked at.
Very good.
Yes, sir. So I guess my, I will close my part in saying that we have Grant Works here that is going to tell you about the timeline of the actual projects. But we are here and I am here because I'm just 30 minutes down the road. And I am here anytime you guys need me. Anytime you have questions, anytime you have a concern, please let me know. Your grant manager actually lives in Houston as well, so she can be down here fairly quickly. But you've got a great team and you have great potential and it's our job and my duty to make sure that it's successful. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. I want to thank you and all the folks from, from the GLO office, Mayor. Like if I may, they've been great in bringing me up to speed, working alongside with staff, making sure we, we have, we are meeting those benchmarks. And we are in an interest of hurrying up and doing these. We can apply for more funding, hopefully that, hopefully that we are qualified for. So thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your time. And Mayor, if you would allow us to please have Grant Works be a part of this next portion of the presentation. If, if we pull out an order, they've got a very long drive back.
Yeah.
And they've been with us all afternoon, working on different projects and presentations. Ms. Melissa, thank you so much.
I want to say something to you, Melissa. You have been an amazing resource since Hurricane Harvey. It's fine. I mean, I'm excited to finally meet you in person because we've had many conversations since Harvey about Dickinson and then here, of course, in Lamarc. And I just want to thank you publicly because you have been absolutely amazing. Every time we call, you get right back with us in the, in the next 24 hours. And I know government work is not easy, but, and I will be writing a letter, letting your supervisor and glow the GLO know just what a phenomenal you do for, phenomenal job you do for our area.
Well, thank you. I, I live here and that was the main reason that we were put in our communities is because I, I remember waking up and praying for it to stop raining. And let us all pray that we make it through this hurricane season. Okay. But I think we are in a much better place than we were five years ago. And we have regional relationships and we have partnerships and we have people here ready to assist if and when. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Melissa. Grant Works.
Hey. As, as they come and join us, I want to introduce, please come on up. And this is Mr. Nick Pine and he represents Grant Works. I know he'd like to introduce our, our new project manager. Rick works hand in hand with them on these projects. We have a very brief presentation to show you on where we are specifically. As Ms. Melissa mentioned, where we are with your current projects right now, the three projects we have. Mr. Nick, I guess we can tag team this if, if, if.
If that's fine. That's okay. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, council members, staff, the audience for allowing me to, to speak. And I'll try to be brief, but anybody who has known me, and I know several of you, and it's, I feel like it's homecoming week, if I can say that first. And I don't know if a lot of you know, but I recently retired from Texas City after almost 40 years in city government. But I don't know if you know, I got my first city manager job right here. I was sitting where this young man is back in 91. And this was not here, 91. We, we were working up there. I actually was involved with the process here when this was built out of an old shopping center. And I won't go through the whole history of it, but it's great to see it still here and still functioning. It all didn't cave in. It's like Nicky did such a bad job. The whole place collapsed. We swept it out with the trash, but it's great to see. They're beautiful. You've done a great job keeping them up. So it's, it's great. Truly coming back and still seeing the dedicated people that we have here and seeing friends, people that when I was in Texas City that would come and talk and do business with us, Mayor. Great seeing you again too. So anyway, with that, I, I do want to let you know I'm not your project manager. I'm just the eye candy for. I'm just the eye candy for Grant Works. Okay. Didn't get a laugh out of that. So obviously it wasn't very funny, but my title is I work in client services and your new client services rep is Ashton Crowe. And she does work the entire Houston area and she'll be working closely with Caesar as we go through coming up with grants and additional ways to be able to fund a lot of your work. Our project manager on this, Mr. Gonzalez, was coming back from California when wildfire smoke caused his plane to be trapped in. And so he is a little late. So Rick and I are going to tag team. But I do want to, and we can be brief. Now I want to thank Ms. Washington. She did a great job really kind of doing the introduction in the background. And so the money is the most important thing to you. The second thing is, are we on time? And I can tell you, we're at 25%, 30%. I'm sorry, let me, it's actually backwards. 45% done, 30% and 25% on the last project, the larger project here. We're hitting those benchmarks, so you'll get your reimbursement in timely fashion. So that's what you want to know. Rick will get a little bit more into the detail as to what specifically is being done. You aren't seeing a lot of work out there because we're still in that environmental review stage. But I am here. If I can't answer the question when Rick is done, I'll make sure we get answers back to you, but we just had a meeting, Rick was involved, I believe Caesar, Rick and a number of people. So I don't think we'll take much more of your time and I think Rick will do a great job handling that. So I hate to pass it off, but that's how we're going to do it tonight, if you don't mind. Are there any questions though, right now of me before Rick gets into? Okay, we'll try to be brief.
So these are the covering the the projects. This is the sewer manhole project that the numbers are the tag numbers that are basically through the project number, that D208. There are several sections of sanitary sewer lines that we are looking at replacing. Those are in red there. And then we also are lining all the manholes. That's part of that project. Manholes are not shown on this map, but those are the base, those are the wastewater lines, the sanitary sewer lines. At this time, they were planned to be lined. We were TVing them. That process is getting, getting going right now. As far as quotes, we'll TV all those lines. There may be some point repairs, but we refer to as point repairs. If there's some collapsed lines, there's some lines that needs to have additional work done. But when I talk about lining these pipes, there, it's a, it's an in situ process where we actually put a PVC liner in the pipe, basically makes a new pipe within the existing pipe. So we're not, we're not planning on digging up all these sanitary sewer lines and replacing them. It's a lining project. That project right now is about 45% done. We've got 70% plans. It says there engineers submitted 50%, but I've got, I've got 70% actually that around that we've got to look at. Once that gets done, the engineering design, then we will be able to go to bid. The environmental design is, or review is being done by Grant Works presently. That'll go to GLO. They'll review that. They may have some comments and some additional questions that would go back to Grant Works slash the engineering to answer any questions or concerns they would have. So once the environmental review is done, the engineering designs all done, then we could actually go to bidding.
Rick, I'm sorry to interrupt if I may. A question that I get often, I'm sure you guys get it as well, is towards the end, we're construction where we are on that. Do you please note that we are set to put this out to bid starting the new calendar year? That's our intention. Okay. So everybody's asking, all right, fine. We have this. When is it going to happen? We intend to get it done then. We intend to finish construction towards the end of 2024. That's when we need to have a closeout completed. Hopefully at least two months. I don't want to shave it that close. I hope to be done well before then. Because we need to have this done. The contract end date is January 1st, 2025. However, we want to make sure that we're adhering to that. And as you heard, we are on time so far. But it's prudent that we stay on that. If people keep asking, when are we going to be done? When are we going to start? When are we going to finish? We can't even start till we go out to bid. We're not ready to go to bid. We have not been given the clearance by GLO to bid yet. And we're hoping we have that in place by the start of 2023 for this particular project.
Just quick question. Will you be addressing Mary and Melody Lane?
Yes.
It's one of the three projects. The wastewater treatment plant lift station, that is the larger of the three projects, $48 million. We are looking at all of our lift stations, all 21 lift stations. Various improvements will be done at those lift stations based on the needs on those lift stations. That, that, once again, engineering work is getting done. Wastewater treatment plant design, I think is about 30%. Got a set of plans in my office from last week. So that's a large project that'll take some time to get design work done. Once again, the environmental review on this project is in the works. So that's a process that Grant Works does. They'll submit that to GLO, similar to the D208 project. There may be some questions. That'll come back. This one we've got basically at 35%. 30%? And so it will move through the same similar processes, the D208 project. We cannot go to bid on these until the environmental reviews are done. And of course, the engineering designs need to be done. Once again, it's a similar, similar project schedule. We should, we should be able to get bid in on this. Might be a little bit after the first of the year, but we'll say spring 23. We ought to be ready to go on this project. Staff's working together with the engineers to make sure we've got everything we wanted, the new plant. And, and it will meet our needs in the future. This is the West Lawn Drainage Project, also known as Mary Melody. As you can see, that that it actually encompasses an entire neighborhood. So the Mary Melody portion is on the left side there. And, and the Bannon Street is on the, on the right side. We're putting in stormwater structures, piping to improve stormwater flow out of this entire subdivision neighborhood. The final environmental review is finished. We've got signed documents going back to GLO on that. The design is 100% done. So this project is pretty moved along, but 25%. That might be for the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I just, I just noticed that. Kyle and I just noticed. We're actually 45% complete on this one.
So let's be clear, Rick, because this is, this has definitely been a project that has been brought to our attention, myself and Mayor Protem Compion. So you're saying as of today, we do now have the environmental study back?
Environmental review is completed based on some, there were some comments that came back from GLO that went back to to the environmental review team, which was not, not Grant Works. It was another firm we were using on this project. There were some delays because some health situations I won't go into. But that project was delayed due to some environmental review issues. That environmental review is done. All the comments that GLO asked to be addressed were addressed. Final documents and they're signed. And I believe you were one of the signers on those documents.
So what's the next step?
The next step is get approval, GLO do a final review. And they'll come back and give approval to move forward with the project. We have 100% plans. We're ready to go to bid.
Perfect, Will. What time till we get to the shovel?
This project is expected to go off for bid November of this year. So hopefully within two months. And once that's done.
Yeah, yeah, we're fine. We just wanted to be able to take that back to the, to the community. Thank you.
If not soon. Completes our slideshow.
That's the three projects that we've got right now.
We will edit this slideshow so that the bottoms match the correct spots and put that out for public view. Should there be anything, we'll do a slight voiceover with Rick if need be. So if any residents have any questions, they can have that. We'll also have the stationary available for public to view. If anybody's asking questions, you'll also have that availability to share that with them, with the correct stuff on there.
Very good. Council, do we have any questions for Rick? For Mr. Finan? For Grant Works? Very good.
I just want to thank them. They took so many hours out of their day to be with us today. We met at length about some future funding possibilities that they brought to our attention that we will be aggressively looking forward. So we are, we're, we're hunting.
That's wonderful.
So we will be aggressive. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Thanks, Nick. Good to see you, Nick. Good. Yeah, it's hot. It's hard to say it's good in the summer, so.
We were just riveted by their conversation. Item five, citizen participation. Limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person for city related business who has signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, you may give the mayor your full name, address, item you wish to speak about. Parts of Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself as you're participating by telephone. You're participating via the Zoom platform on your smartphone, tablet or computer. There should be a icon, microphone icon, the lower portion of your screen that you may press to mute and unmute yourself. You're visiting with us in person. You may approach the podium to my left, to your right. Give the mayor your name and address and you may be, you may speak. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak? We will now move to those that are in person. Alan. Is it Horish or Harnish? Harnish. Welcome, Mr. Harnish. Name and address, please, sir, for the record.
Alan Harnish, address 2609 Meadow Lane, Lamarck, Texas. Represent the Lamarck West Texas City Little League Board of Directors. I'm really here to talk about the most important resource that this city has. And it's being underutilized. And that resource is our children. We have failed as a community to support the children. The Little Leagues has worked 74 years in this community to support the children in here. Some of y'all don't know the story behind this. But Bobby Beach was an eight-year-old son of George Beach who donated and built the Bobby Beach Baseball Field here in Lamarck. That field is dedicated to his eight-year-old son that had passed away because he loved baseball. I'm here asking the community as a group, the citizens of this community, the leaders of this community, it's time to stand up and support the children in this community. I've seen on the news, I've seen on TV where all the civic leaders get together. They're going to do this, they're going to do that, they're going to support the children. After they say it, I don't see any results coming from it. You have an organization out there, again, 74 years of age. 75 this spring baseball season. Years of age. The community has stepped back and not supported this little league like it has in the past. The last time any money was spent from private funds was when the people from Minute Maid Park, the Houston Astros in 2005 came out and donated money to the facility to help rebuild the stands and the big stadium. That particular stadium is the exact duplication of the stadium that originally the kids played Little League baseball in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. We need to support this league. We need as a city and as a citizens of this city to support this league. I'm asking everyone in the community. If you want to support this Little League, I will be at the park from nine o'clock Saturday morning till 12 noon. Not to work, but to take volunteers' names, phone numbers, and also to give you a tour of the facility. So you see what we have to put up with trying to get the season ready for each year. We start in the fall, getting ready for the spring. I wish to thank the city council, the mayor, and also the citizens of Lamarck for your time. And please, let's support the most important resource that this city has, and that's their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Mitchich. Name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Robert Mitchich, 24 North Curly, Lamarck. The previous presentation underwater works, it was a very good presentation. Software will assist y'all very much. I would suggest though, in lieu of raising those rates so drastically, whichever year plan you choose, it's going to be a significant impact to the public. Perhaps raise it. Look back at what we've spent just on repair in the past two years on water lines. Double that. Raise your rates according to the water rates. That will buy you a little bit of time. Put together a presentation very similar to what Mr. Saylor has just done and what we've been working on as far as the sewer and wastewater lines. Put that out there to the public so that they can actually see what the plan is, where it will be done and a timeline with that before you actually borrow money. Because exhaust your grant sources first. That's, that's something that the public is going to want to see. Not on a, we're going to borrow and well, we can pay it off with grants later. You know, there's, you can stage this. And the thing about this is you can implement a water rate change anytime during the year in order to affect something like this. So it's not, has to be done by this October. Yes, you do because you have to raise some rates because of the water itself. So there is time and put together a thorough package so that the public can understand it. My second issue is a proposal for you as council to consider within our ordinance and timelines. Is that I would propose in light of the passing of Mayor Sam and her legacy as an educator. Children were everything to her. I would propose that we rename our library the Geraldine Sam Library. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Joseph Lowry. As always, Joseph's name and address. Welcome.
Joseph Lowry, 2503 Cedar Drive. Actually wanted to thank a few people today. Mr. Garcia, Mr. Campion, Josh, for the extra help, short notice. I do appreciate the help. It's you know, when I have extra questions and stuff, just a lot of you guys have been stopping what you're doing and I do appreciate that. I want to speak on, I'm very thankful that nobody's hands are in the cookie jar right now. That's, that's important to me. That nobody's answering the cookie jar. And I keep hearing rumors about a vendetta. I have no vendetta against anybody on council or any elected official. I just don't like corruption. That is all.
Thank you, Joseph. All right, guys. Out of six minutes, I'll read all five. If Gus says it's okay, can I take all five? Let's do it.
That's fine, as long as nobody on council.
Council, do we have any objections?
No, sir.
On these items? All the minute.
Let's do it. Special meeting, minutes eight four, 2022. Special, Blood Benefits Trust minutes eight eight, 2022. Special meeting minutes eight fifteen, 2022. Special meeting minutes eight twenty two, 2022. Special meeting minutes nine six, 2022. Council, I am seeking a motion to approve all of those.
So moved.
Your second?
My second.
Any additions or corrections? Here and I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item seven, ordinance, discussion possible action regarding regarding improvement ordinance seven one. Ordinance number letter O dash two zero two two dash zero zero one three, dissolving the Public Safety Committee. Uh making various findings and providing an effective date. Say so. Did you wanna weigh in on that? Or no?
No, sir, I.
Uh I'll I'll be happy to, Mayor. Um this is something that was brought to uh my attention by the police chief. Randall Aragon. Um I I will allow him to speak uh more to the numbers and the specifics. But essentially, what has happened is this Public Safety Committee, this is not dealing with the building. This is a committee that was established to hear complaints on for against wreckers in the city of Lamarck, Texas. Um in the past, not the way the program or the way the process works, if there is a complaint, they meet with staff and it's. And Chief Aragon and his staff try to resolve it at the staff level. In the past nine years, there has not been a complaint that went beyond the staff level. In light of that and in light of trying to streamline our processes and look at everything we. Um it staff is proposing that the um. That the this Public Safety Committee be disbanded and that any appeals, if there are needed to be any, which has not been the case for the past nine years. Would be brought to the city council uh for that appeal process. And as it as it currently said, that there was an appeal process to the council meeting. Um so we're just cutting, we're cutting out a committee that. That because it was resolved at the staff level.
And latter that council, do we need to hear from Chief Aragon, or do we think we have what we need to to act? If so, I'll I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Your second?
My second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, the the ordinance number.
Oh.
It's confusing, cuz it says two zero two two dash zero zero.
Sure, um I could I could speak to that as well, and and this is gonna apply wh- while this. My answer is specific to this ordinance. This is going to apply across our agenda for other ordinances and resolutions. Technically, since the council has not approved these yet, we have not given them a final number. Once council approves them, if you do, then they will be given a final. Be honest. Yes, uh so if y'all don't approve them, there won't be a number.
So this is a placeholder.
Correct.
Okay. And and everything you just just described is Texas local government.
Yeah, that that's.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, there there is still a caption that describes what the ordinance is doing and.
Okay, just just so that we're all on the same page, we we wanna make sure that we are. Okay, got you. All right, uh. A- anything else, Mike?
I'm good, sir.
I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item eight, resolution consent. Uh the following items shall be considered for action as a whole unless one or more council member objects. Unless otherwise specified, the city manager has is authorized to execute all necessary documents upon final approval by the city. Do we as council want to pull any of these items?
Actually, I have had discussions on all the items, so I'd like to.
You wanna do? Okay, let's take them all individually. Item eight one, resolution number letter R dash two zero two two dash zero zero seven two. Approving a clean water agreed order and corresponding supplemental environmental project agreement with the Texas Commission on Environmental Equality. For settlement offer for violation of penalty in amount of ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Go ahead, Jim.
Uh this is a discussion ongoing that I've had with the city manager and and our city attorney to clear to lend some clarity. Uh there, there's a cover letter and and we'll get some clarity here. There's a cover letter. That from the attorney that was involved in this effort that said that the fee of ninety-seven five was offset by. The amount of uh dollar amount that we were gonna do to make the corrections under the SEP. Uh and that was a hundred and five approximately thousand dollars.
Yes.
And then, however, the order, as I pointed out to you, Gus, actually has language in the order. That says that the city of Lamarck has already paid a penalty of the ninety-seven five, but that's not accurate.
As far as I know, the city of Lamarck has not paid that penalty. The way it works is that the agreed order is signed and that the TCQ allows the city of Lamarck instead of paying money. To Austin allows us to do that, keep that money in our city. And do work improving environmental issues in our city. Um I would have to defer to Rick on what exactly the SEP we're doing is. I don't, I'm not aware of all those details, but they are, I believe wastewater issues in the city.
That is correct. Yes, that's wastewater treatment plant, blowers, the chlorine, it had to it had to. The projects that we had to do underneath the the SEP agreement is is projects at the wastewater treatment plant. That that created the problems for the violations that we recited for.
As hope, but once again, I only want us to to make sure that when we sign off on the order. That there's clarity on this one issue, and Gus has the site. That the order, as I said, states specifically that the city of Lamarck has already paid. Uh the agreed amount of ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and that's not the case at all.
No, that's not the case.
No, and 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 yeah, we're not gonna, we're not going to sign an order, we're not going to sign an order where we pay a penalty and then.
And 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 that's that's what that's what I understood.
Yeah, that that's not.
Please uh take a look at that before you sign that. Just get that corrected. With that, with that acknowledgement, I'll move approval.
Your second?
My second.
Any further discussion? Here and I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item eight two, resolution number letter R dash two zero two two dash zero zero seven three, approving an expenditure for. A six uh say foot, six inch portable pump in amount of forty-four thousand five hundred and forty-two thousand forty-nine cents. To BPR Pumping and Vacuum Solutions, Joe.
The uh in the backup documentation for this pump, which is something that we did. Approve on the budget from last year early on. There was a need there. The the photograph that you provided, Rick. Uh is not actually an accurate representation of what we have, because the invoice itself. Or the description states that that very beautiful big pump is actually on a trailer. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
So we're we're we've paid for a pump that's on a trailer.
It's a portable pump.
A portable pump. And that pump, at the time that the need was discussed, was because we needed, uh as I recall, one of the pumps at the. Treatment center or something had gone out. There was some need. Uh but what what's the pump gonna be used for at this point?
So when we, actually, it's in use right now, as a matter of fact, and then one of our lift station, we had it at Bonney. It's a it's a portable pump that we can take on site if we have a pump ferry at a lift station. Um i- is primarily on this pump that we can drop a a suction hose down inside the the wet well. Make a connection to our for our pipe and use that pump to pump water out of that lift station. We can also use these pumps to pump water out of a storm inlet that may be plugged and causing flooding. We put a discharge hose down the street, put a put the the um suction hose in the inlet, pump water. So we can use them for different sources. Also use them on on a large uh water line break. If we have a very large break, deep hole, we need to get water out of the hole. The six-inch pump will move a lot of water for us.
I I imagine. So right now, it's temporarily being used for that purpose, but it's intended to be used for a variety.
Right.
That was the clarity I was looking for. Um um and so move move rule of the item there.
Second. Any further discussion? Here and I will call for a vote. All all those in favor? Any opposed? I voted I too, as well, Kira. Eight three, resolution number letter R dash two zero two two dash zero zero seven four, authorizing submission to the Galveston Bay Estuary Program Grant. Joe.
And. It's a, just the language, but I was just looking for some clarity here. The Galveston Bay Estuary is considered what area? Or maybe I should ask a different, is Highland Bayou Park part of the Galveston Bay Estuary?
Yes, sir.
It is.
It would be.
It would be. So the the funding that we're approving today is something that we we could likewise utilize. Possibly for for our issues that we have over at Highland. Bayou Park, repairing the shoreline.
That is our plan. We we've submitted a project already to TCQ. This is a TCQ funding project. We've submitted one through their non-point source program, which is a separate program that they had. That that grant was submitted or application was submitted. The the projects are similar as far as what we wanna do. This is this is to to improve the estuaries. Uh the shorelines basically a- a- around uh Galveston Bay. Our west bay is part of Galveston Bay, you know, so the Highland Bayou sits on the upper end of 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 west bay of Galveston Bay.
Yes.
Um we had got, actually, Mr. Garcia had gotten information from one of the. People that we work with on the environmental aspects about about taking a look at this program. This is a five-year program. We're trying to put together uh an application this year to get in. That's why we wanted to come to council about that. We can always resubmit next year. It's a four-year, I think it's a four or five-year program.
And the focus on this one is the Omega.
Doing one at a time. Yes, sir.
So thank you for that clarity. So move move.
Second, your second?
My second.
Any further discussion?
I just have one item. This deadline is quickly approaching. Thank you for your approval. We're finalizing the grant.
Manager report submitted, a submitted report to update council and community on standard operations of the city. Before it can be acknowledged as a whole or discussed at the pleasure of council. Council, do we wish to? Have say sorry go over the, one of them have have already been taken care of. Is that right?
Yes, item nine three, we've already discussed earlier, so that one we can take off the list.
All right. Go ahead, say so. You have three, right?
Uh yes, actually, technically, four with the ARPA uh update.
Well, I mean, now you have three left, right?
Yes, sir, correct. Um if there's no questions on item one, it was just more for point of uh uh clarification, let you know.
You're fine.
Great. Item two, uh nine two, we have uh the pleasure. I'll let uh Kiara and uh JP take this next one. It is a joint effort of the new open records request software that uh has been uh. We're going through a soft launch. We're hoping to launch by October one. We've been able to get that going, so if we could share that uh information with everybody. Uh it's a brief video that will be displayed for residents. We don't have to show the entire video if need be, but we created a voiceover video that. Shows people how exactly to see the video, uh how to go in there and use the system. Uh and it'll allow us to have more clarity. So we'll we'll share it briefly. We don't have to look at the entire thing. But uh go ahead.
Hello, Lamarck. This is Joshua Pritchett, your Public Relations Officer. It is my pleasure to bring you more information for our system updates as we continue. Moving forward and we are continuing being better, bringing you more information faster each and every day. It is my pleasure for us to dive into an update to our system for public information requests. If you will join me, we will look at our new system. Now, as we dive into our system, where I am starting at today is thecityoflamarck.org. And so this is gonna be the best place for you to go ahead and start your public information request as it pertains to the city of Lamarck. The easiest and best way to find that is go under the government dropdown tab, and you will see clearly on the right-hand side. Where it says public information requests. Now, when you click on that, it will take you to the landing page for our city clerk. As well as the request for public information. Now, as you do that, it will typically give you the Public Information Act Download Handbook, as well as any other resources. That may be beneficial for you to use or access when it comes to public information. What you would.
For the sake of time, this will be available for public view. It's about a five or six-minute tutorial. That goes at length into how to put this process and how to use this new software. This will allow us to track our time spent. Uh any expenses tied to these public records requests or anything else of that nature that will allow us to be uh hopefully more prompt in responding to the increasing load of. Other records requests that we have. Uh we thank you for that. Uh we would like we we support to launch that as soon as possible on our city's website. And to also have that available through Channel sixteen and through other channels to make sure that relating the public know as well as YouTube. If anybody has any questions, they'll be able to uh access that, and you'll be shared that link as well. Should you wanna share with any of your constituents who have any questions?
So could you get that information from me for the next meeting to see how many public information requests that we had? Uh this past month and also for the year.
Certainly, uh Ms. Kara, if you could please provide that, so.
City manager, is is the tutorial gonna be online too for the residents?
All of it will be online. It'll be online if not already. Knowing JP probably launched it right before we walked in here. We just finished the filming earlier today.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right, guys, we are now moving to. Your four ARPA update, right?
Absolutely. Uh Kyle, I'm gonna ask you to share the screen. I wanted to share very briefly where we are with the ARPA update. Uh as you can tell, we're we're trying to fly through these presentations, getting quite a bit done here. This is a result of the survey that was done. These are the analytics to it, and I I I wanna call your attention to the fact of how many views we have, how many submissions we have. And I could share this information with you to download the report, but I want you to scroll down a little bit, if you don't mind, right there. I want you to go focus on the intention that. Clearly, folks, the number one item receiving votes was water line repairs. Okay, the number one uh voted item was that. Streetlights was number two, which we know that we're attacking that. We'll have an update for you at the October meeting as to where we stand with that. Um stormwater was three, and then street repairs um phases, uh hopefully getting to phase two of ten. We're obviously going through the county bond now. We could scroll down the list real quick briefly. Obviously, the things that provided uh um support by the number of votes. This report is very, very detailed. It goes all the way down into different sectors of uh where we stand. I wanted to share some of that, but. Um in lieu of time here, one of the things that was very comforting to see was that the public did believe. That we could get more done if we had the right tools. Uh there's those heavy support for uh some of the items we requested through public works. Uh even fifty-six of the voters approved a million dollars worth of repairs and or putting uh money aside towards a police station. Uh which we know that has been in uh in in dire straits, but the the software upgrades that we have. Um digitizing some of our aging records, all the way down to the finance software. We have been very, very thorough in what it's gonna take to get these things done that ARPA funds do allow. It took a lot of work to eliminate from going from thirteen million down to about seven million that we put on the survey. And then to get all this uh support for these number of votes for these things was very comforting. Uh on any that there were tiebreakers, we we were very uh happy to to see those items presented. As far as what the weighted score was, how these things rated head to head. If you remember, the survey allowed them to not only to vote for their support. As far as residents, but also to prioritize which ones came in order. So this is taking all of that into account as far as the votes. Um particularly, one of the things that that stood out to me was some of the comments that were made. Uh obviously, water line repairs were were the main uh sections that come and how that was. We've got. Data from even the the gender, for those that put their gender in, uh how many results we got through Facebook, by 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 you name it. Uh age, whatever it was that we had. So we're 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 very happy to see that 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 folks took this series. We got really good rate of return. Anytime we put a survey, you get twenty-four percent return rate. That's always really, really good concerning uh how many folks uh get a chance to see this. We'd like to get more of this done uh through through this software that allows us to get this hands-on uh approach. In addition to these items, you asked us to look into a few items as well when we, after we had already done the survey, obviously. Um and I've been favorably, I've received some uh um updates through federal questions on what those were. So you had questions on, well, can we offer assistance to folks that need help with utility bills? That's been approved. Uh you asked if we could have uh uh help with the possibility of anybody that has nuisance abatement issues. That's been approved. Uh so 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 those were comforting to get approval so far. Uh we have reached out confirming that rental assistance would be a possibility. We're waiting to hear back. Whether that would be approved or not. Uh other things you guys asked for was possibly repairs or assistance with uh homes from seniors or any programming that we could get. For them. That's also pending approval. Once we have all those approvals together, we're gonna do. Precisely get this together into a short list of how we can spread the wealth amongst all the votes that came in. And really dive into how we're gonna deviate this with these dollars. As you know, for ARPA, we have until twenty twenty-four to appropriate how we're gonna use them. Until twenty twenty-six on how they're gonna be used. One of the things I was very favorable to hear is the uh program that you. bring all those items to you. I will bring all that forward and you can make those decisions accordingly. But I wanted to at least bring you synopsis. There's a lot of questions where we are with this. Brief synopsis of where we are. We can dive in. I can give you my recommendations at a future meeting and we can take this from there.
You're good. Any any other questions?
So we can see this?
I will. I have login for it. I can share the PDF of it. The only thing is when you download it to PDF is not as clean. But I'll actually ask Kyle if he can right now since he has the active. We can download it and I'll share the PDF version. It's I'm about thirty, forty pages long. The report is, but I will be more than happy to share that with everybody. But very, very thorough, very happy with how they it took weighted, the prioritization and how different people voted. So if you voted streetlights number one and I voted number two, each one of those was given an actual weight. So that weighted score was really eye-opening to what it was. I was very surprised to see um that police station scored so highly as far as support for the police station. So thank you, everybody for for the and I'd like to thank the public uh for that support as well because everybody played a very big role uh in helping the survey get completed to get really good public input on this.
Very good.
And that concludes our report tonight.
All right, we are now to item ten, appointments, appointments, reappointments or removal of all city boards and commissions. Here, I see that we have one application. Do we have an appointment?
Yes, so this would be an appointment by city manager for Mr. Morris Martin to be appointed to the public uh sorry, the civil service commission. We talked about public safety. For the civil service commission for a new term. And I believe he is the chairman of that.
This would be a reappointment. And we will entertain that.
I mean, it's
Yeah, I don't
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Oh.
He made the nomination.
Oh.
He made the nomination. We have to make the motion.
Oh, I'm so bummed you beat me to move to the motion. Well, I definitely second it.
Is there any further? Well, we don't have any discussion on on a nomination. All in favor?
I.
Any polls? Item eleven, new business. Item presented to council for discussion and for council to provide direction. Uh, I don't know that we need a water rate workshop recap. And so council, do y'all think we need to go ahead?
I have the question as I've been thinking about this. Rick, could you clarify something for me? You mentioned it once again, twice or toward the close. You you and I think the city manager both indicated that you have already identified twenty-five million in in uh cap water capital improvement projects, or should I say capital improvement projects for our water system?
Yes.
Uh, and you have also identified a source of funding from that, which is the water uh
Water Development Board. Actually, different sources of funding, Mayor Potem. Like if I could just, different sources of funding. So some coming from ARPA. So as as uh Mr. Misich, if he's left, he he did mention for us to uh try to use those funds first. We have allocated the ability of using some of those funds for that for funds that we currently have, not future funds, because, for example, we're in deliberation about MIT mod for MHCAP. We know that we're gonna get funds, but we don't have them yet, so we can't account for those. Any funds that we currently have in place, we've earmarked what abilities we would have from these pots that we have to put towards that.
Bill doesn't lend any clarity. You you said you had twenty-five million in projects. Number one, I don't I don't. I would like to know what the scope of work is for the twenty-five million. Just like you did beautifully with the
Yes, sir.
Mary Lane and the other. That's number one. But number two, you 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 both represented that you we have to. The the reason for for us to have this discussion on water rates is that we have to have a source of of funding to uh to pay for, to show our lenders, whoever whoever they may be, a uh an ability to pay back over some period of time, correct?
Yes, sir.
So my question is, what are these funding sources? Have you identified them? I'd like to to know what they are. Uh, how much of it is debt, additional debt, the low-interest loan that you mentioned, the two and a half percent? And uh that would be helpful as well, too, for me to to identify perhaps.
Besides, I I can give you a without putting a pinpointed number on it. A large part of that would come from, we would recommend first and foremost the state revolving funds, one, because it's the lowest interest rate and two, because some of it would be uh hopefully forgivable. However, besides whatever funds we have that we've already obtained grants for to do some of this preliminary engineering and work ahead of time, uh, we don't have a whole lot more uh on the books that we could analyze for these water uh repairs. Otherwise, we would have used them already um to make some of these repairs. So the much good majority of the twenty-five million dollars, we would reach out in waves. Now, I would not recommend doing it all at one time. I would recommend, as the presentation showed, to do it over series of about three or four, I think, four years is what we had on there with those pink bars that we had. It was over four years.
I'll try to add some clarity. So right now, we're we're ready to move forward with design engineering for two of the two of the major. We've got the two-inch water lines broken down into four sections. Engineering's already done this. This has been done for a while. So most of the two-inch water lines are located on the east side of the city. Those water lines are seepers, as Mr. Garcia referred to them. They were identified in the twenty sixteen water audit report as being the most likely uh problem with our water loss. So those water lines need to get replaced. Part of replacing those water lines is actually repositioning those water lines that are currently in easements out to the front of the properties, putting in six-inch water lines, improving the water or the fire flow capacity over there because there is no fire flow over there. All we got is two-inch water lines. Can't put fire hydrants on two-inch water lines. So all that improvements is part of these projects with these two-inch water lines. So it's not just putting another two-inch water line in. We're we're upsizing these water lines to six-inch, putting fire hydrants, putting them in a better place where they can be maintained for the next seventy years. And and that those projects are broken into four components right now. We're ready to move forward with engineering for areas one through three and four through six. In order to move forward, our plan was to do was to use existing revenues from this twenty twenty CO bond, so we can start the engineer. We can put these projects in for the SRS funding for next year. They need to they need to get put in 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 the fall, submitted. And then they will get approved or at least be put on what they call a priority project list from from the water development board board. It's part of the SOF uh SRF funding. And once that's in place, then we know we've got funding. Some of that the money right now with the SRF funding is not part of that infrastructure bill that requires the thirty percent payback or the thirty percent forgiveness. There's still some forgiveness money built into the SRF funding through the state programs and the federal programs, but it's not the same as the requirement. It's on the new infrastructure money that's coming down that that actually has not been in place yet. So that that's coming in the future still.
Mr. Garcia, a question and and Mr. Uh, so so Rick.
Either way.
I I got you. Once again, I'm old.
That's fine.
If if I were just to ask you and recognize I'm I keep thinking about this big increase on on rates. If I were to suggest to you that we could identify a million dollars to go toward water and or sewer for this upcoming fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Differ any increases for us to continue community discussions on this. Would and and ultimately come up with a final plan, but give us more time. Um, is is, do you think that that would be helpful?
Um, if I may, if you do zero capital improvements this next year and don't take any of these additional things, regardless of what source they come from, you will still be in the negative by up to upwards of potentially two million dollars. I think uh the number might be more in the one point eight. If you do nothing, if you don't do a single capital improvement.
You're not answering my question. My question to you is if I have a pool of money of a million dollars that that I can identify to put into this fund. And you're going to do whatever you want to, but it's part of a plan, a greater plan, right? To say to say to the community, continue educating our community as opposed to us making a decision next week or that, but 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 continue this education. And so we understand that we have to come up with a if a fiscal plan that we understand, or at least that I understand from you.
Sure.
That I understand. But our good faith is we're going to commit a million dollars out of this to to lend to our water issues to start this effort, just like that ARPA uh allocation up there that apparently twenty-four percent of the community find interesting. Is that something that we're able to take to our po- potential lenders uh or or grant sources uh to continue utilize, to continue uh acquiring the additional funding for the for the long-term project, the scope of work that you're going to get.
So I'm gonna try to be brief in in how I answer this. If we magically had a pot of money of what's the engineering for the one through six, one through seven for the first two phases and one point three we need?
Yes.
If I magically had one point three million dollars and it had nothing to do with our current situation of our water rate, let's say we were breaking even and I magically had one point three million dollars, I would say for us, I would recommend that we use those dollars to go do the engineering so we can try to get some uh what we call in the industry shovel-ready plans. By getting those shovel-ready plans, it would make our grant applications that much more attractive when we met one after. Um, before I even get to to say revolving funds, that would be my first recommendation because I'm going to go after free money, not hope that it gets forgiven money first. But that would be my first phase to do it. And that would be what I would recommend if we could somehow squeeze together one point, regardless of what we're doing with the water rate. Completely regardless of what you're doing with that. If it's going towards capital improvement, that would be my recommendation. And actually, as a result of both a combination of potential bond funds and or ARPA funds, as the people have spoken, that would be my recommendation to earmark the first possible one point three regardless of either one of those two sources. We're still waiting for the audit number to be completed. But whichever of those two uh uh sources we can, that would be my recommendation. The first thing that we get done is go out and get that engineered as fast as possible because as we're speaking, water is seeping.
Okay.
So that would be my recommendation if we imagine if you would give me that direction without me presenting that yet.
All right. So God looked upon this community this evening and I'm not believe. Uh, we had a presentation that the uh method of distribution for the disaster mitigation funds have been approved.
Yes, sir.
And um and Ms. Washington also told me individually that that movement will be toward within a month's time in terms of the next steps and, you know, we're 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 good to go. And having said that, I want you to disregard considering ARPA monies for this one point three million because under the disaster mitigation program, water and sewer facilities and pro and and are permitted uses under the disaster mitigation.
Yes, sir.
So I would urge us to take that, which is unallocated at this point.
Yes, sir.
And use the one point three from this, hit Grant Works to submit their approval on this.
Well, actually, we have an RFP out for those services. Actually, it should be announced by four at the end of the week, so we don't know who made bid for that. But you did previously approve.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll answer that on that, but whoever it is, right? But um you get utilize this as a source. Write it up properly because wording is important on these things, right? Get the approval and then we can start the next step. Therefore, this council is not under pressure. Me, maybe I'm selfish. I'm not under pressure to say, God forbid, next week I've got to make a decision on this. I would like to, as the mayor said earlier, continue these community discussions and then come up with a plan and maybe for this, for one year, we said utilizing this allocation. And my my thought is for twenty twenty-three, no changes. We maintain this, what we have, or if we make a change or increase, it's very minimal. Right? So that it's not hurting really people. And we we start planning, but it's a minimal increase for the for for this year, for this year as well, in addition to the one point three. Or forego that, have the one point three plus then for the year twenty-three, twenty-four. Is that when we start implementing after we've had our ongoing discussions? That's my thought.
May I just s- suggest a a possible amendment to that to that recommendation or for something for us to entertain? Be very honest with you, my presentation, when that was formally announced, was going to be to use all of those funds to address that first round of repairs because we can already use some of these other funds earmarked and approved for that. And the reason why I say that MIT mod will not allow us to start using funds for that more than likely, although they're trying to accelerate it now, as you heard. It took them eighteen months one time to get that was guidelines. That was nowhere near as contentious as this has been.
We're just
No, 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 I
Have to figure it out.
No, certainly, but
Well, we have an urgency. I I'm just saying that. But number two, I also say that in this regard, the Biden infrastructure plan that was planned, the bipartisan plan. And and I've you know, I'm attending a seminar on that later this week, too, which is is that there's additional funding under that as well, too, for these particular types of projects.
We So we completely plan to attack all of those. And one thing I failed to mention from the cap from the presentation we had earlier on water, even if we wipe out every single capital improvement plan, every single capital improvement that we're intending to do on our water side out of that just to break even, a drastic change must occur. And we'll be prepared to bring that to you a little bit, and we will. We'll we'll bring it to you without capital improvement. If it's if it is the urgency of 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 this council for us to not do any capital improvements to our water at this time and only do some engineering and only go grant-wise and only look at other forms and not acquire any debt and not make any changes right now, we can look that option up and do that. However, just to break even right now without a single repair, leak, anything addressed, we're still looking, being very drastically in the hole. So I urge you, and and then that's also addressing current debt because there's current debt already on the book.
You've already convinced me me personally that there's a need for us because I'm one of those guys who said, I like long-term fiscal plans, right? So I I I understand the need. I do not. I do not. I'm not willing to accept a a drastic water rate increase of any, you know, it has to be reasonable. And and there's other another area where I would use ARPA funds. I also would request that at least fifty thousand dollars of the ARPA dollars be utilized and sent to a nonprofit that does water bills like the Salvation Army for our residents that are challenged by any increases that
Um, I I actually just said that in our presentation.
Hold on. Uh, uh, we're 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 getting way far off of the agenda, so if we could.
No, this has to do with the
Not
The water stuff.
Right, but but you're talking about sending fifty thousand dollars.
No, no, I I I'm saying to me, I I I'm not.
I understand, but we're getting
Yeah, we're going, we're going, we'll wrap it.
Given you my thoughts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to recap, um, I, if I'm understanding Joe correctly, Joe would like as part of the final considerations that you put in front of us that we would actually vote on for it to be an option that includes no or very minimal rate increase with X, Y, and Z options for finding it elsewhere, utilizing the ARPA funds to instead commission engineering plans.
Oh, no, the the disaster mitigation. And or one of the two.
Right.
Right.
Or one of the three. And also, like you said, we
Okay, so that's just, and so all the only thing I, so I was just making sure I understood that correctly. Is that what you heard, city manager? Is that what you heard? City clerk, city attorney, everyone? Okay. Is that, did that reflect you correctly? And then the only thing I had wanted to add was that I just to wanted to reiterate what I said earlier, which is I do not want to workshop this again. I think we have a lot of information at our disposal. I do think it needs to be presented to us, Mr. Manager, as um a a menu item, if you will, with your top recommendations. And for me personally, being able to see side by side some of that data that um that PJ, oh, my gosh, was it PJ? JB, JP. That PJ, oh my gosh, was it PJ, JB, JP.
JP.
JP. So many letters, um, that JP was able to pull up really quickly, but it took some back and forth, if you can put side by side. What an average water bill looks like today for the average resident. What it would look like with these various different plans so that we can have that quick shorthand. That would help me make my vote. And that's it. And actually, what you re- what you, you know, reiterated a second ago, Sisar, about. How significant, you know, you've done everything in your power, I think, to make, to convey to this council and the citizenry that. We are losing money, we are losing money rapidly, we are, or maybe not losing, we are spending money. And continuing to spend money, we we have all these plans for infrastructure. But the nature of nature and this infrastructure is that it's just getting worse at all times. And so we need to act. But I'm very intrigued to know exactly what the number would look like. Um, that you mentioned earlier, if we were to eliminate all capital improvement projects. Where we would be debt wise still, like where would we be? And therefore. What would that bottom number be for what we need? Where we need to adjust our water rates eventually in order to be able to not just be bleeding money. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you so much, that's all my heart.
All right. Let's uh, let's wrap this up maybe.
I just wanna, um, sorry I missed the uh workshop. But um. And forgive me if it was already addressed, but the um. Is there a way or was it brought up about? Some of these residents that are on a fixed income? That are seniors? Was that brought up already about?
That's what, that's what Mayor Protem and and guess I'm gonna say this, just so we can sort of mean. That's what Mayor Protem was referring to when he was trying to bring, take fifty thousand to give to. Nonprofit organizations that will help with rising water bill rates.
Well. Not, actually, that's not, I mean, I was more geared towards. Like a senior discount. That's what I was gonna bring up, because we've got residents that are fixed income. And. I mean, give them a discount, give them a ten percent discount or something, that's just my two cents. And so. I don't know if we could legally do it, but.
So what we'll do, since this 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 decision will take place next Monday, that gives you all an entire week to. Come up with all these different options. A, are they legal, are they not legal, this is what they look like. We'll we'll.
Right.
The biggest thing for me, Mayor, is that um. The grants are fine, but that takes time, and we may be in a whole nother year, and we gotta stop kicking it down the can, down the street. We need to deal with this, water rates are going up, it's the number two issue that they're gonna be talking about in the state legislature, everybody, water rates are going up. We have to deal with it, we have to find a way. To provide solutions, you have groups like Baker Ripley. Who can help seniors to pay their lights and their water bill, so we we just need to partner with those. Groups, but I I for one, I do not wanna be on on a lame duck. Council, because we're so, it's so hot right now politically, that we we are not solving problems. It is time for Lamar to move forward. We have everything we need to be successful, and we need to do that for the majority of our residents who voted us in in this position. And I believe will support good, positive change. The issue with Lamar for years has been water. And plumbing, and that's why I left and moved to Texas City, the first time I came, because of the issues with the water. Dave's old saying, you remember when I lived in in that corner off of Hoover, and there were issues with plumbing and sewer and backup. And I was like twenty seven years old at the time, and we moved to Texas City because of all the problems. That Lamar had with their plumbing. This is not a new issue, this is an old issue. And I was elected to do something about it, and I think we need to do that and stop pushing it down the can.
Um, if I may, on the.
Down the road.
The can down the road. I also wanna bring the light to the fact that historically, our 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 general fund has been having to support the shortfalls of. Of the actual utility fund. And I think it would be. We're we're, we put ourselves in a compromising position right now, because. Residents have spoken and said that they want to not rely on the general fund for utilities. Well, our utility rates are higher than what we're bringing in, so we've been doing it for years. The question is, is if we don't listen to the residents, we're gonna be in another compromising position. So I I I think, again, I don't envy that decision. All I can do is recommend. But it is a tough one nonetheless, because it it's it's one or the other, right? It's either through property tax, or I mean, right now, this tune, I don't have the numbers on me, but I know it's over a hundred thousand dollars that we had to offset from the general fund. To just keep us kind of in line. What that does is gonna drive property rates up, it's gonna keep certain things down. You know, the reason we keep petitioning for salary recents and so forth is because we're using money that we could use for that. To offset the utility rates, because they're upside down. Don't get me started on on sanitation and so forth, I I just, I I don't wanna bore everybody. The sheet that's on the 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 screen will be posted on our website. Uh, JB, if if you can, whenever you have a moment, it is a a synopsis of where we are with our projects as well. We want to keep this updated as of August thirty first. It shows you where we are, if you scroll down, it's a little bit on there. It shows you where we are, it's technically a abbreviated camp schedule that shows where we are on each one of these items, so. Um, on the, on the recoding project, on the road project, on any of the grants, you'll have that on there. Wouldn't clearly be visible for residents to know where we are on these steps and where we need to be. And and that's including our 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 lighting study and our lighting, it's it's moved beyond a study, we're actually taking affirmative action already, we've already started replacing bulbs. We've got a lot of favorable calls on that from residents that we're already switching my televisions. Uh, we're 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 in line, if the weather allows us, we'll be more aggressive and and have a career update for you, hopefully October or November. I lose my report, I'm sorry, I've I've taken notes as to what we need to do. It's it still doesn't take away from the tough decision that that has to be made, so thank you.
Very good. Item eleven two, items for the good of the order. Does any one of us have any items for the good of the order? We do have executive session, so we'll be going away here.
I do have one, uh, Tony Griffin, uh, District A is being nominated as a woman in leadership. Uh, nominee for the Texas Lamar Chamber of Commerce, her first time being nominated, so she will find out if she was one of the chosen uh on Wednesday. So we're excited about, and she's an amazing volunteer, so I wanted to just give a shout out to Ms. Tony Griffin of District A. Being nominated. And I'll be there to represent.
And we have. Communities, of course, invited, Lamar, Santa Fe, Hitchcock, if you have interest in perhaps. Lowering your water bill and saving it on watering your lawn, we have a rain barrel. Uh, presentation workshop out at the West Side Fire Station, it begins at two P M. And everyone's invited to come out on that, they will have rain barrels for sale as well out there. Uh, and it's part of the presentation. Uh, West Side Fire Station, two P M on Saturday.
One thing I do wanna say, uh, right, right, quick, Mayor, if you allow me, there there's been a lot of uh. Death, and I guess the chief can kinda. Tell me a little bit, you know, we can find out, there's been a lot of uh drug overdoses, we've, I've lost two young students. In their twenties to uh uh. Bad dope on the street, I just wanna see if you can give me some information about that, so we can see what's. Going on that has happened now in the last three weeks, uh, these young men were in their twenties. So I I wanna kinda see what we can find out about that, and if it's something that we need to put an alert out. To our residents about uh this this, I don't know if it's fentanyl or something that is. Uh, I think is now, I don't know too, I think they call them perks or something like that, but they're bad perks. And I think these young men have just just fell dead. So I just wanna see if we can get some information on that from our narcotics team, to see if that's something that's spreading in our area. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Well, Michael, you going next?
Uh, yes, sir, um, the gentleman that came and spoke about the little league. Um, wanna push that out, I pushed out about the softball, so any volunteers that. Would like to sign up. Uh, he'll be out there at Bobby Beach Park, or excuse me, Bobby Beach Ballfields from nine to noon on Saturday. So, great, great project for our youth. So get out there, support. The boys, just like you would support the girls, so. And other than that. That's all I have, sir.
Nothing for me.
Thank you all for coming out and for participating in democracy. I wanted to remind you that we are in the peak of hurricane season. Uh, and if you are like me, you are also in the middle of summer vacation. And your days are running together. And you're all over the place. But let me remind you. That we ought to at least one time a day. Look at the tropics. Because you just never know. Uh, on. Uh, this past weekend, I believe there was a hurricane. Uh, that. Affected and and impacted Southern California. And I had no idea. A good thing that I didn't live in Southern California. Uh, but uh be mindful that we're in the middle of of hurricane season. And do your due diligence to be prepared. To be vigilant, just never know. What can happen during these times of year in our great, great city. Having said that, say so if you don't have anything else, I think we'll we'll be moving into uh our executive session. Gary, do you have a time?
Seven forty eight.
We will recess, our regular meeting at seven forty eight, uh, and.
We are back in from our executive session at.
Eight forty-four.
And we will open our regular scheduled meeting at eight forty-four. And we are now on item thirteen, actions taken from the executive session. I will entertain a motion on thirteen one five five one dot zero seven two deliberations about real property. Property located at Galveston Central appraisal district ID number three one one six eight seven.
Move authorize the city manager to facilitate the discussion regarding. It's got particular problems.
Second, you guys be good?
That's fine.
Any any further discussion? Hold all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What happened? Don't worry about it. Let's go. Thirteen two section five five one dot zero seven four personnel matters. City clerk evaluation. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we table that discussion to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further just uh no discussion on table? All of all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item thirteen three section five five one dot zero seven four personnel matters. City attorney evaluation. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we table that discussion until next week as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item fourteen adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.